This is just like a quiz on our family tree. And when you live in Dayton your whole life?
I've only been here thirty years. Really not effective.
I think that's the only part of the town that truly is named after a family name, Coppin de Bell. I mean, it's in the official records, the town, you know, the whole thing when they did Millers Lane.
I know.
They all like working from the rear, like it's digging up the food like.
It is six thirty one.
My understanding is everybody that lives on Millers Lane for the most part are cousins. Is that right? We could legitimize how we walk, obviously, you know, walk by, but you're a woman, that doesn't matter. So there's another, there's another person I've got to mention, which is Torc Hearn, that has to do with two people. The time it was just here, it was a kid, but it's actually been. Yes.
Yeah, it's a great reason.
So, yeah, let's say we have a person that we don't even know, but can't see them, or even know them. Who are, um, who are the persons that I'm not sure. I mean, a lot of them are, um, sisters. I have some girls, um, came here this year, so I asked them to go over to us.
Is that the Council Oaktree?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the picture.
What about actually, oh.
It's like, it's like.
They're on this one all the time and I love it.
I like, I like when they do that one. That one's, you can't recognize it because they zoomed in, so it's like, doesn't look like the picture. Cable, we're ready when you are. All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is Wednesday, April tenth, two thousand nineteen, at six thirty-ish PM. Uh, this is your regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen's meeting, and I do call this meeting back to open session. Um, this meeting is being audio and video recorded. It will be broadcast live on Channel Nine, replayed on Channel Nine, and it will be placed on YouTube as well. And at this time, I ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing after.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, while we're standing. I have the sad task of announcing the passing a number of, uh, of a number of residents in the town. The first one is Solmer Rosario, the wife of Tony Rosario. I think we all know Tony because of his cruise nights and his involvement with the Vietnam veterans. They lived on Brook Street. This is Alice Perry, uh, longtime resident of Dayton, and she was a Dutra, and we all know that the Dutra family is well represented in town. Richard Pacheco is the father of Senator Mark Pacheco. Louis Azar, the father of Superintendent of Schools Anthony Azar. Robert J. Lopes, Smith Street. Donna El Thaca of Wellington Street. Uh, Ms. Thaca, uh, was, uh, as Mr. Ferry described, she was, she and her husband are sort of, uh, adoptive grandparents of the Ferry grandchildren. And I have a personal note. My sister-in-law, Margaret Gulat Souza, passed on Monday. At the age of ninety-nine, she was my husband's last sibling, and she was my godmother. So in their memory, I ask for a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
And our condolences to their friends and family as always. Okay. At this time, as we just had an election, as is customary, um, we do need to reorganize the Board of Selectmen. Hello, Mr. Pacheco. Um, and so, and then we have a six-thirty PM, uh, appointment. So at this time, I declare that all offices are now vacant, um, so we do not have a chairperson, we do not have a clerk, and I will call for nominations for chairman. You may also nominate yourself.
I'm going to nominate Kent Pacheco for chairman.
I'm going to second that nomination discussion. Uh, I just wanted to say to the public, um, I have thought a lot about the leadership here on the Board of Selectmen. And I've thought mostly about what is fair and equitable to everyone who takes the time out of their busy lives to volunteer, to serve the public. We have had chairpeople who have served very long, many, many years. We have had people who have been elected to the Board of Selectmen, and I believe never served as chairman. So I think what is fair and equitable, if, and I don't know if the board will be amenable to getting this in writing, that's maybe a discussion we can have in the future. I think what is fair, personal opinion, is that whomever is in their third year of their tenure should be the chairperson. Um, so that is why I have supported, uh, Mr. Pacheco for chairperson. But I also want the public to be aware what that means next year. That means next year, I will be supporting Selectmen Gulat for chairperson, because that is what is fair and equitable. And I don't believe any one person, um, should be the chairperson for many, many years without giving that same opportunity of leadership to their colleagues. Um, so that is why, and I just wanted to be very clear about the record for that.
And if I can just add to that, probably about six or seven years ago is when we had a chairman that kept on being, uh, being the chairman, and other people, like you noted, weren't able to become chairman. So we're going back to what has always been policy, unwritten policy, I should say, that the last term of someone's who's elected as a selectman, uh, they become the chairperson of this group, so, uh, that's why I'm supporting it. And I also feel that, uh, next year, if I am appointed and it's my last, my term ends, uh, I also will be supporting, uh, Mrs. Gulat, which will be in her third year.
Correct.
And she's entitled and should be.
Absolutely.
The chairperson.
Do you have any objections, Selectmen Gulat?
No.
All right. And you, uh, we all agree that that's fair as a board?
Actually, what, how this came about, it had nothing to do with the, um, number of years you served. We did have somebody that literally served on the board for twenty-one years and was chairman for twenty-one years. Um, when I came on the board in two thousand and seven, um, Mr. Hegeman was chair. Of course, we also had Board of, Board of Health. And so, um, we rotated the chairs, and so it was Mr. Hegeman, Mr. Piers, and I was clerk to both boards. And then, uh, Mr. Hegeman was not reelected, and then the person who came on, uh, the least senior member, then it became Mr. Piers, selectman, me, Board of Health, and that person clerk. So that's, that's how the rotation went when we had all those boards.
Unfortunately, or fortunately.
No, not unfortunately.
The, the, you know, we no longer serve on the Board of Health, so that opportunity of leadership, you know, we no longer have, which again, for me, reemphasizes the importance of having a rotating leadership on the Board of Selectmen. Um, that being said, do we have any other discussion? All right, let's take it to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. That motion passes. Mr. Chairman, congratulations.
Well, I want to thank you, Brett, for, uh, the pass you have. I want to laugh from you as I've learned from Mrs. Gulat.
Absolutely.
Like a big shoes to fill, so. I will not be using, uh, the iPad. But we don't it the old-fashioned way, so I just want to thank you.
Thank you.
For all the hard work.
Absolutely. I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
And he may have big shoes, but don't give him those socks.
I'm going back to my original chair. Back to where I came from.
Good luck.
Mr. Chairman.
Is this your, uh?
Congratulations. Yep.
Okay, so I'm going to, uh, entertain motions, uh, for clerk. I'll step down and, and, uh, nominate Nancy Gulat, selectwoman Nancy, Nancy Gulat for clerk. Is there a second?
Uh, I will second it, but I'm not sure she wants to be clerk. I'm, I'm also happy to serve, but we need to get through this nomination.
I did read pushing rules, and it's impolite to refuse to be the clerk or any position, so.
No pressure.
I just want to, just want to make that.
Is that the eighteen sixty version?
I'm, I'm honored that I'm nominated, but I gotta, I gotta tell you in all honesty, I got so much stuff ahead of me right now. Um, what I thought was, once we get the, um, stormwater NOI done, I think, oh, good, now we're going to focus on watershed management. What has happened is the EPA has sent us this ridiculous assignment that by the first of July, we have to have a stormwater management plan done. This wasn't something I had planned on, so my committee has got a lot of work.
I'm happy to serve.
And, you know, I, I want to devote my time to that and hopefully get that out of the, out of the, get that behind me so we can go back to what we thought we were going to do. So thank you, but.
Thanks, but no thanks.
No.
Thank you next.
So, uh, I will nominate, uh, Dr. Z as clerk.
I will step down and second that. Is there any discussion?
Nope. Happy to serve.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No opposed. Abstentions? No abstentions. The ayes have it.
Good job, boy.
Congratulations.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Okay, so we have an appointment, uh, for six-thirty. Molly Ba, do we have, uh?
Hey, while, Mr. Chairman?
Molly, you want to stand?
She's like.
No pressure.
Don't worry.
We need, uh, to sign this, but first, I just want to congratulate you on, uh, getting, is it a, is it called a patch or a batch?
Arrow of Light.
Arrow of Light.
Mm-hmm.
And you got it pretty quick after you joined the, uh, the Boy Scouts, so, and you're the first female, my understanding is the first girl to get this, so we as a town are very proud of all you've done. Great article in the newspaper. Uh, any comments that you would like to make? So Molly, we're gonna, uh, I'm going to sign this.
I just wanted to say, I went to the Arrow of Light while, probably back in twenty seventeen, um, they had a den meeting, uh, when Selectmen Taylor, Taylor was still, uh, on board, and, um, I didn't see you there. You were not on there at that time, but I would love to come back, um, now that you're a member of it, um, and just meet everybody again. It was a really nice time, and it was nice to hear the stories of the scouts, and I look forward to it.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we, uh, issue a certificate of recognition from the town of Dayton to Molly Ba with great pride for her outstanding achievements in becoming the first girl in Cub Scout Pack forty-five to earn the Arrow of Light Award, awarded this tenth day of April two thousand nineteen.
I'm going to happily.
Congratulations, Molly.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Mom.
Now I'm going to tell you about something. When I was first on the board, back in two thousand seven, sometime between seven and ten, a young lady who lives right down the street here, uh, Ms. Broder, burned the silver plate in the Girl Scouts. And I can remember going over to the Berkeley Congregational Church where the ceremony was held. And her project at the time was a tutoring program at the Dayton Elementary School. A few years later, she actually was also awarded the gold plate, which is the top award. And her project was the prom, the prom gowns that she collects. As a matter of, it just happened this past weekend at the hall at Saint Nicholas. Her sister has taken over that project. But she has done an outstanding job and has brought a great deal of recognition to the Girl Scouts in this community. We all hear about the great job the Eagle Scouts do, but it is really a pleasure to have, uh, a young lady like you, who hopefully will follow in her footprints or become an Eagle Scout. So thank you very much.
Very trailblazer.
That's one of your goals, to be an Eagle Scout. My, uh, one of my daughters, uh, would have loved to have the opportunity that you had, uh, to be part of the, uh, the Boy Scouts and do a lot of the stuff that you did. You liked being out in the field, liked to be out in the woods, and my, um, my youngest daughter Stephanie would have loved to have that opportunity, so you're very fortunate. I'm going to give this to her. You're going to take a picture, and you're going to post it on Facebook if it's okay with Mom.
Is that okay, Mom?
I know, yes. A very great article, actually.
Do you want me to picture that?
No, no, I want it.
That's why she was okay with it, I see now.
You don't toss the camera.
One, two, three. Very nice.
Wait, do you, do you want one of them looking? Did you get one of them looking right?
We know, I can send it to her after. Thank you. Good work. Trailblazer.
That's right. She is. That's what I said. Trailblazer. I'm very impressed. I look forward to knowing a little bit more about you, so feel free to stop by whenever. But, um, you know, I'm continually impressed about the residents in Dayton. They're very cool, and you are one of them, so, good job.
And this is our first town administrator, first female town administrator for Dayton, so you are in good company. Trailblazer.
What grade are you in, Molly? You're in the fifth grade, okay.
So she can no longer be in Troop Forty-five? She, she's part of a den that's in Rehoboth?
She's, I call her a floater. She's kind of in both right now, until I can recruit enough girls to start our own. We have another girl coming up to the troop next year, so there'll be the two of them, and hopefully we can get a couple more so we can officially start our troop here.
I sent out a newsletter. I'd love to try to help get you people to do that. Can you just send me an email with some information? And try to just drum up a little bit more support. I would have liked to have been a Boy Scout. I did not love Girl Scouts. I'm with you. There's not that much going on except cookies, you know, no offense, but.
I love cookies.
I was like an outdoorsy person, and I, I didn't do well with the crafts, and I ended up getting really self-conscious about it when I was younger, so, um, I'm really a little jealous.
It's a good program. I mean, they're both good programs. Out of the world, actually, the troop that she goes to visit with, um, the leader that runs the female BSA troop there is actually the Girl Scout troop leader as well. And she's got a couple of girls in her troop that are actually Girl Scouts and in the BSA troop, so. We can all just get along.
That's amazing. It's all on mission, right?
Yes.
Just do a little.
Exactly.
There will be a lot of, um, little girls who will be looking up to her, who probably already do, so enjoy it.
So, so can she actually transition into one of the troops in Dayton and, and go for an Eagle Scout?
Well, she's in the process. She's already selected five badges that she's working on right now. She got them the other night to like start working the workbooks and everything for them. There's somewhere between, I think it's like a hundred and thirty-five and a hundred and fifty badges, but each rank has like specific ones you have to do, and most are just electives, but she's working on it, yeah.
Fantastic.
We might have her back in a couple years.
She's going to the Lions auction. I don't know if any of you guys are Lions members, but she's going to be at the Lions auction on Saturday. Most of the volunteer hours there.
Mr. Ferry will put you to work.
Well, thank you again. I, I jumped over public input, because Molly's got a lot of homework, homework, I'm sure, so, no.
Bad work, it sounds like.
Exactly.
But thank you again. We're very proud of you.
Thank you. Anything you need, you let us know, as always.
Thank you. So if you ever want to be in any of our troop meetings, just like.
I would. I want to come back.
Give her an email, yeah.
Thank you.
They would love to see you there.
I would like that. It was a good experience.
Like both run concurrently a little bit, and, and both Girl Scouts and, and the Boy Scouts can work together. I love that. I think it, it's good to have it joined together.
Yeah, I'd really like to get hold of like who runs the Girls Tru, like Girl Scout troop in Dayton and kind of get the both of them to,
We have her.
To work together and do maybe like a community project.
Still the room, right?
I think, yeah, she just, we, I have her information. I can get that too, because she just did a very successful, they did a great service project here at Town Hall, and it was, it was great. She did, she loved it, and the Girl Scouts were excited about it too, so, um, I can send that over to you.
Yeah, there's a lot of legal animosity between the two, but I think they, they can all come together, and we can all work together with this.
Hopefully you'll be.
Good experience on both sides.
Excuse me. Hopefully you'll be in the Memorial Day Parade, because we all have scout, we always have scouts. And this year it's in Rehoboth.
Yes, it's Rehoboth, yeah.
So.
Very good. Thank you. So I'm going to.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all you do.
So I'm going to go back to public input. We have a couple of people here. Anybody wish to say anything? Nope. Okay, we have the poll here, but that's going to be.
Seven thirty.
It's going to be at seven thirty. Uh, so let's do the budget, uh, budget review, budget summary review. I want to thank you, town administrator. You did an excellent job on, on this, preparing this for us.
Thank you. I'll probably have another one, uh, a little bit, just so I wasn't able to dive into just about everything that I wanted to. Um, but at a previous meeting, I think it was the last one, um, you had asked for a little bit of a summary, a narrative of what's going on in our budget for this, for this year. So, um, and I can put this up online in case the public is looking for this information, um, or you can email me and I can send it right to you. So, um, we have, our budget is separated into certain categories, so I just listed the increases, and I was happy to see there were actually two categories that decreased. Um, one is debt service, so that's us paying down our debt and paying our bills, and actually went down by two point seven six percent. So that's a really nice thing to see, um, in a time where we're always increasing. Um, so general government has, uh, one of the highest increases, uh, year over year, so this is from the approved budget from town meeting of last year. This is eleven point nine one percent, and that's your general Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, Town Accountant, Treasure Collector, Clerk, Assessors, all of us, um, built, working to provide the services that you require. And then, um, the other high increase is human services. That is in large part due to a new budget from the ADA Coordinator, so a little bit influencing the stats there, um, but that's what that is. Most of our increases have been in personnel, uh, as they normally are, but we made some changes this past year that influenced that. One of them is adopting the minimum wage law, which doesn't really seem like a big deal, but we have various workers, um, election workers, cable, uh, some other people in the, uh, primetime and council on aging functions that are now minimum wage, so we saw those costs go up. We have, um, provided some more duties for certain current employees to take on, so those increases are, are reflected of a different job. Um, the largest one was the Building Commissioner, who's now taking on facilities management. The, um, a few budgets, so there were, um, three different departments that are expecting retirements. So some of the, most of the costs associated with that have increased greatly. Um, a lot of those are in the general government category, uh, just a, a little aside. And then we have some requested additional hours. We, the Board of Selectmen have, I shouldn't say wait, I'm sorry, the Board of Selectmen have asked for an additional part-time staff to help our office situation. Um, but that person would also help me a little bit as well, so we're, we would potentially share that. So those are some of the bigger personnel changes that we've had. Uh, stormwater management is rocking and rolling, um, under Selectmen Gulat's leadership, plus some expertise with some of our department heads. Um, that has gained a lot of momentum and a lot of steam, so we're seeing a lot of work come out of that. Emergency preparedness, same thing, that they are really making gains and, and moving along, so funds are being expended, so we see that as well. However, um, the ambulance billing clerk, who was added on last year, with her presence, we no longer need to spend money on an outside vendor to do our billing, so we save money by not contracting that out. Uh, the cost of her is actually cheaper than the cost of the company, and we end up getting more back, so it's twofold, twofold increase.
Spend less money and bring in.
Bring in more.
Collect more.
And she's been great, so thank you, Rebecca. Um, we have grown in the last five years. I've probably thrown this out a handful of times. I'm sorry to keep repeating it, but I'm shocked by it, by seven, over seven hundred people in five years. So with that, we're expanding our services, we're changing things. You've added a town administrator. You've added, you know, more professionalized departments. The Board of Selectmen and Board of Health have split off, so as we're dedicating staff to those functions, more is happening and more things are being spent, you're also saving. Uh, we are going out to bid on high-cost items, just about all of them, insurance, trash collection, um, are, are big ones. We've upgraded our phone systems for better service, um, that's changed exponentially. Wasn't an easy rollout. Thank you to everybody for their patience, but it's worth it. Um, I'm very happy with the system. The fire department has a voicemail system, finally, um, but that's up and rocking and rolling, and they're doing well. They have a network covered, um, which they hadn't had before, and that's, you know, allowing them to communicate with their certain software that they share with the police department, so the service has been improved and increased there. Uh, so we're just checking a few boxes. I'm not going to go into all of this, and the public, you can read this. Um, education. So we are in this unique situation where we actually pay three assessments. We don't have our own school system, but we pay three assessments to them, and they are up by eight point three six percent collectively. Um, yes, that's very large, but it's good to see that they're all sort of running together. I was actually pleasantly surprised that not one was an outlier. They were all in the same vein of increasing. Um, and I think what needs to happen for any real change and real savings there is a changing in the state legislature, state, uh, state legislation for formula. Uh, that is something that's going on at the state level, if anybody wants to follow along, but it is very important, um, for us to even try to find any sort of savings. The school budgets account for fifty-three percent of our total municipal budget. And so this little pie chart is here. Selectmen Zagraffus requested a pie chat, so, pie chart, so here it is. Um, the colors aren't great. I apologize. I couldn't figure out how to change the scheme, but.
I actually.
I wish they, I mean, the blues are not designated enough for me, but I added in the labels the percent of the budget. So you'll see that, um, again, fifty-three percent for education, public safety is at seventeen, and that's the highest percentage outside of education. So you're doing, uh, basically a good amount of spreading it, spreading the wealth, um, so to speak.
I did note that in eighteen fifty, uh, the town was paying three dollars and forty-nine cents per student for the year.
Now we're at like twelve thousand.
The year eighteen fifty?
For the year, three dollars and forty-nine, and they had, and they had a superintendent.
And we had.
In fact, he actually lived at my house. He owned my house. The superintendent, first superintendent in town owned my house. He was also in charge of the liquor for the town also, so you got to stipate.
Liquor and education. That is interesting.
So thank you very much, uh.
Yeah, I really appreciate it.
Do we know when we're going to get a firm number from Dayton-Rehoboth?
I.
We did.
Yes.
We did.
It's, uh.
So.
It's not on here, though.
No, no. It's not on here. So one of my last acts, as the chairperson, was since we got the number, we also got a, I'm like really proud of this, and I, I feel like you were instrumental in making this happen. We got a line item budget.
Hallelujah.
From the schools. I asked the town administrator this morning, because I think she got it either today or yesterday, I said, can you please put this on the agenda for April seventeenth, because I don't want to hold up their process, um, and can you make my colleagues a copy? So we all have three copies. It is a long document. But we have about a week to go through it all, and this is the most information we've ever had.
Just the numbers, not the narrative.
Yeah.
So I think the narrative is just one page.
Correct. Yeah, it's like a cover letter, almost.
But everything is itemized, so thank you to the school department, because it's very helpful for us to see, you know, what it is that you're doing, um, and how we make our decision, so.
When we had our advisory committee meeting and then the public hearing, the increase in the school budget was just a little over two point something percent. It wasn't three percent. Is it in that same ballpark, would you say?
Um, I'm sorry, say that again. It, is what, the three percent?
The total increase at Dayton-Rehoboth over last year's budget was under three percent. It was two point something.
Eight-six or something.
Something like that.
Slightly higher this year. I know that Dr. Azar presented a preliminary budget of like one point three percent increase.
Oh, I never saw that one.
No, nobody did.
Okay.
But he did present it.
The, the two point, when we went to the advisory committee, and then the public hearing was two point something, so it's in that ballpark still.
Somewhere around there. I think it was in, like, I, I have three and a half in my head. I don't know why that's there, but that's, it's, that's my.
I know it was under three. I think two point eight something is what Brett's saying is, is correct.
And is it broken down the way, uh, just broken down like fiscal year twenty eighteen? What, what they spent?
You mean there, yes, but you're going to look at it, it's backwards. It starts, so we go like from, uh,
Eighteen, nineteen, yeah.
Latest on, or earliest on. They go from latest on, um, but it's descriptive. It tells you what, what it is. Um, there's also some salaries in there, so that's helpful.
Good, good to know. But it's, it's the most info me. I just wanted to say, since I've been here, I'm not sure, because you were here in, uh, in two thousand. I'm not sure, because you were here in, uh, in 2007 Selectman Gulart. But this is the most information I've ever personally been given as a member of the Board of Selectmen. So I really do wanna thank the school district for that. So I appreciate it.
I think the last detail I saw was when we had the interim superintendent, it was on the finance committee. And it was, uh, the gentleman that came in and upset the apple cart when we found out the, uh, the way the allocation was being done. And after that, we weren't getting, after that allocation was discovered, we didn't get the details. So I'm glad we-
But we went back to that one-page summary.
Absolutely. So-
Sounds good.
And I, they broke it down in a very, you know, it makes sense. It's user-friendly. So I appreciate that too.
They did a really good job. I meant that. They really did. And I think everyone will appreciate that before we go, um, and decide next week.
So, I'm sorry, just to finish this up. Um, so the end of the third page is the department requests by category. My recommendations, where I just went through it once, um, just to see where we could lower. Um, the budget overall is up by 6 percent. That's just a request. That's not us taking any action or changing things around. Um, so that's my requ, my recommendations, like first round. And then the Board of Selectmen's recommendations as you voted over this past spring, or this spring. Uh, important to note, you have not yet voted on the DR assessment, of course, which we're gonna schedule for next week.
Right.
Um, so that, you know, that leaves your numbers a little bit out of whack-
Yep.
Um, in that regard. And then on the last page, you'll see a listing of the proposed warrant articles to date, uh, that I have received. The warrant is open and it closes on May 1st. Um, there is a line here that I would like to see. I don't know if we'd be able to do this. Um, I would like us to start as a matter of practice, taking whatever's left over in stabilization. And maybe this happens at the, the fall town meeting, um, and putting it into stabilization. Whatever's left over from free cash is, uh, put back into stabilization. Um, just as a matter of storing things away. I feel that the economy is going to turn in the next few years and I'd like us to be prepared for that. And that's, that makes me feel better if I can put some money away.
Can I just make a quick observation, Mr. Chairman? Um, I did-
You gonna wait for the answer?
I did, I did do a little bit of math as if the Board of Selectmen were to approve the school district's assessment for the Dayton portion. Um, and so we have the department request, 22,63,209. The TA recommendation from our town administrator, 21,816, 21 million, excuse me, 816-
I really cut that budget, yeah.
21,816,946 dollars. And if the Board of Selectmen approves the assessment for the schools district as is, our, uh, total would be 23,897,6 dollars. So if, if my math is correct here, because what I did was, I'm sorry, I know what I need to do. Hold on one second.
While you're doing that, I'm gonna call attention. So if you look at that 1 million, the, it's second from the bottom. You'll see that your, your recommendation's actually higher than the department request. That is due to the $2,000 in, um, tuition costs that we added.
So I, I needed to subtract what we already approved, which was, I believe, BP and Bristol Aggie for 734. Our total, my apologies colleagues, is 22,355,407 dollars. Um, so there is a bit of a difference between what the, uh, town administrator recommended and what the Board of Selectmen ended up recommending. Um, so it might be interesting, and I know you had wanted to do this, but maybe for next year? If we could do like a bar graph with the three bars being-
Yes, I did wanna do that.
Department, TA, we're strapped for time here, um, and the Board of Selectmen, just so we can track differences in, correct. Yeah, that would be nice. But, um, very helpful these figures you prepared.
Good, good. Mine, um, I included a higher percentage for union contracts because I'm just trying to plug that number in. I do believe we'll be able to finish before the town meeting, so-
I do-
That's where mine comes from, my increases.
Okay, we're gonna speed this up a little bit.
22 million. Yeah, there's just about 6 or 700,000 dollar difference between what you ended up recommending. So we might wanna look at that next year a little closely.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for that summary.
You're welcome.
So we're gonna go to number nine, the town administrator's report.
Okay, so, um, a while back, we had a meeting with a, a business owner who was looking to open a car dealership. And a, as part of that hearing, uh, we talked about garage repair. And I found that the Selectmen don't actually license garage repair. I am here requesting that you start doing that. Um, some communities do rely on the state because of our environment here in the sense of lots of wetlands, very important tributaries to the Chauton River. Um, I would like us to start licensing that. And that would be inspecting and making sure that there's floor drains and that oils and any other fluids that are coming from garage repair services are contained. Um, that the businesses are taking precautions for leaks, have the ability to clean up the leaks if anything bad happened. Um, and so in your packets today, you have what would be a proposed application, a checklist for them. And, um, the, this would be the process. That they would file out this, fill out this application. We would inspect them with our building inspector, potentially a police officer depending. And, um, have a non-advertised public hearing is what I mean by that. We wouldn't be putting anything in the paper. We wouldn't be sending out a butters notification 'cause there's no law requiring us to do that. But we'd have people here, it'd be a public hearing, you'd open it. Anybody in the public would be able to comment if they so chose. And then you'd close it, make a decision. And it just provides you, you're providing the opportunity for comment based upon the license, um, which I think is a good practice to hear from the residents that might be affected by it in the area. So, um, that is my proposal if you so choose. And if you do vote to do that, we would need you to set a garage repair licensing fee. My recommendation's between 50 to 75 dollars for the year. And then, um, next meeting, we would have somebody in here who's already-
Okay.
When does the year start, Mr. Chairman, or Madam Administrator?
It would start, it would start-
It starts January 1st.
Right.
Every year is January 1st.
No, it should be 50 years.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I, we're slow.
I meant like July, so July 1st.
This would be, it would end December 31st. It goes concurrent with the calendar.
Okay, perfect.
Has everybody had the opportunity to take a look at, uh, this?
Yeah. I, I, I really liked it. I liked the application. We can, we can discuss the fee. I did, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay, wanna make one suggestion, which is, I really liked the checklist. I think that checklist for any business, any type of business that wants to come to the town of Dayton, makes it very clear what criteria needs to be met. What hoops need to be jumped through, so to speak, to get your license. Um, and I would suggest, and we did briefly talk about this before Madam Administrator, that we have, I know we can't make a checklist maybe for every type of business that wants to come to town. But if we could have a gen, general checklist, so, and we could put it on the website so businesses have at least an idea of, um, you know, what they need to do.
Sure.
Absolutely.
Mrs. Gold, are you having, is he having questions?
Um-
Okay, so then?
The, um, I was just thinking of the checklist we have for issuing certain kinds of licenses and permits. And for example, um, if, before we issue a permit or renew permits, we check with the tax collector to find out. So I'm just wondering if there could be, whether it's on this place, on this page or another, just some additional sign-offs by key personnel on things we should look at?
Oh, so this one, it doesn't look like much, but it says, "I certify that I've filed all state tax returns and paid all taxes required under law." This says state, but we should cross it out and just say taxes.
Right, we should just have taxes.
All right, but I don't want a certification from them. I want something from my tax collector.
Oh, we're the key personnel, you mean? The Dayton key personnel?
Yes, yes. Um, we, as a matter of fact, we had to deny a, a not-processed stormwater permit for that very reason, because there was outstanding real estate and personal property.
No, I support that totally.
And we, we have that rule that if you owe us taxes, you're not getting-
Oh, I, and, and that should be for, that should be on the general checklist, right? For anybody who wants to locate in Dayton.
The only other comment I have is, um, it's not a public hearing, 'cause a public hearing has to go in the paper. So what you're going to conduct, I believe, is a public informational meeting, which means it's open to the public. We don't have to put it in the paper. Uh, you can, they can come in, you can tell them what we're talking about, they can comment on it and everything. But it's not a formal public hearing. So it's, it's a public informational meeting. That's what we do if we want to have the public meeting, but we're not required by law to put it in the paper and all that other stuff, okay? That's what we did for, stormwater bylaw, we need the formal hearing. Change in stormwater regs, public informational meeting. So that's just the difference.
So I'm just trying to, right, I'm just trying to communicate that it wouldn't be that full of butters notifications.
Right. It's just an informational meeting for the public and they can ask anything, whatever.
And I think what you're saying is sometimes when people hear of a public hearing, they're expecting those types of notifications when they don't get one.
Right, and, um, it's, and sometimes people get confused, what am I supposed, what am I supposed to post? Or am I supposed to put it in the paper or what? So, we just, we usually say, is bylaws and things like that formal? Gotta go the route and other than that, it's informational.
Okay, any further discussion on what's before us?
None, Mr. Chairman.
I'll entertain a motion.
I will entertain, bear with me a moment. I'm on the iPad, folks, so I gotta scroll back up to the agenda. I am entertaining a mo, I will make a motion, excuse me, um, to approve the garage repair licensing application with the, uh, changes that were discussed this evening along with the checklist. No, it's okay.
We're moving this along, how we can.
Yes, that's fine.
Second.
Any, uh, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Eyes have it.
Mr. Chairman, before we move on from this item, do we need to set the fee, Madam Administrator?
That's the next item, right?
Okay.
See, if you had the agenda, you would see.
I have to scroll up and down.
We can print you out a paper agenda if you'd like to do that.
That's okay. I'm tough. I can work on-
He's trying, he's trying.
I'm trying to make this work over here.
So is there any suggested, uh, fees?
I think that 50 to 75 dollars a year is-
Reasonable?
Reasonable.
Mrs. Gold, do you have any preference?
I would go, I would go 75 because I don't wanna start at 50 and then we look at other. By the way, the Board of Health is supposed to be reviewing all of their fees. And, which means they're probably gonna go up. And I don't wanna be at the lower end and find out if you want a permit for something through the Board of Health, it's 75, and then you realize. So I'm hoping, if we set it at 75, it will hold for a period of time.
When I brought, when we talked, Karen and I talked about this with the building inspector and he said, "Well, you know, you'd want it to pay for the services provided." So things like inspections. And so that's why, I mean, I at first was at 50, but he, he convinced me 75 would be.
Yeah, and I, and like I say, I'm looking for stability, that we don't have to go up and-
Up and back.
And we're gonna be in the ballpark with other-
I agree, yes.
...permits and fees in town. Um, I will make a motion that we establish the garage repair licensing fee at 75 dollars per year.
I will second that.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one question. We were talking about the budget. FinCom is meeting, oh, next-
Oh, yes.
6:30 on the 16th.
That's right.
Do we know what departments were gonna be-
They're not doing any departments that night. It's kind of their organizational meeting and, and where they get together and they figure out how they're gonna, their plan of attack, I guess, or their course of action.
Okay.
So I, I tried to get the full schedule out of him too. He didn't give it to me.
I remember looking at the agenda and it wasn't, it wasn't like what we're used to seeing, like 7:15 is this department.
Well, that's because I used to set those.
Yeah.
Okay, all business, number 10. Uh, we received a resignation letter from Chris Chandonay.
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 Chardonay.
I like, I call him Chardonay.
I like that.
Chris.
It's okay. That's a good mistake to me.
I call them a lot of things, but not that. Mrs. Madeiras, I quit the Dayton Trial Committee effective immediately. I plan to continue with the Cemetery Commission for now. Will email suffice. Thank you, Chris, and it has suffice. He's notified the, uh, that he wishes to resign. I'm upset about this because I thought he was very effective. And, and he does a lot of, as you know, a lot of walking on trails throughout the state. So I was hoping that he would continue. But I'm also happy that he's staying with the Cemetery Commission.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept with regret and thanks the resignation of Chris Chandonay from the Dayton Trails Committee.
Is there a second?
Yep, I will second that, Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? No abstentions? The ayes have it. New business. Vote on, a, vote on passports stipends.
So passports are now officially at the library by appointment only. Photos can still be taken here at town hall. Um-
Are they not taking them at the library or you can do them either?
No, they're not taking them at the library right now because they need to find really a place to-
Okay, just making sure, 'cause I had someone ask me about that.
Yeah, so we, you can still come visit us, $10. Um, so now the question is about the passport stipends. Stipends is $25 a week previously, which we, what we have budgeted for currently and for the next fiscal year is three individuals. The four individuals at the library are all able to, um, are all able and certified to handle it. I just don't know if you wanted to offer four stipends, do three stipends. It is by appointment only, so the likelihood of it being how it was here when people were kind of all over and coming, just tying up, you know, every, every which way, um, it wouldn't be like that. So I, this is just here for you to vote on taking the stipends away from the current individuals that have it, who are not processing the passports anymore and reallocating it to these new individuals.
The library personnel who took on the task.
Right, exactly. And the question is, is it going up from three to four or staying at three?
Is it, where it's gonna be by appointment now and not walk-ins during blocks of time? Um, and because they work, they have to cover the library when it's open.
Yes.
How many people will be present each day if appointments are made? Because-
Not sure of that, but you're right. I know where you're going with that.
They all come in on Tuesday and you and I are the people doing them Tuesday. Why are we paying anybody else?
Right.
So my concern is appointments. Do we know why it is appointments?
I think just to get a handle on it, that's just what they, what they voted on when they took it, they being the Board of Trustees, I believe, when they took it over.
So if it's by appointment, I'm sorry, permission to speak?
Yes.
If it's by, thank you, Ms.
I wanna get control of this meeting.
If it's by appointment, then should we be doing the stipend? I, I don't even know how this would work, based on how many appointments? Like, 'cause they were going all the time.
All the time. So, right, so let's do, can we break this out? Can we vote to stop the stipends to the two individuals that were here and doing it? And then we can ask these questions.
Are they doing it in, at the library already?
Right, now, yes. Effective, uh, what was it, April, what was April?
It was last week, I think.
Yeah, the, the first Monday.
Yep.
Um, they've been at the library.
Okay.
But the girls, you know, they had been asking, answering questions, taking the photos. Like, they were still kinda doing stuff, but now it's over at the library officially.
So my question is, if we stop these stipends here, we're still taking pitches though? 'Cause I, I know people are coming in.
Right.
So they're still doing some of the service?
I would say it's not as much as it was before. Not that I believe the 25 stipend was sufficient.
I see that Karen's had to stop. I've been in the office when she's had to stop and take the pitches.
Need to make some decisions.
Well, yeah, I do have a problem because it is, there is work being done in this building still. And I'm concerned about the availability to the public if you have to have an appointment. I'm concerned about four different people getting paid the same amount of money if in fact, some of them may not issue passports because the appointment's unscheduled.
That's-
We need to get a handle on, on what's happening.
That's why it's on your table, mine.
It would've been easier if they kept the same system. I think we all agree on that. Like, they just do them throughout the day as people come and then that makes sense. But the system's a little different, so.
It's a little different over there though. I mean, they, they have, not that Karen and Valentin have other responsibilities, but they're, they don't have as many people over there to cover for them, so.
Right. And also I think we can all agree that the system we had really wasn't working that well.
Oh, definitely.
We wanted, we wanted over there. Unfortunately, they don't have the place or the space, uh, to take the pitches. So that's, that makes it a little bit more difficult.
But we can work on that.
We, we've gotta come up with an equitable way to pay the people almost piecemeal. You almost, you kinda alluded to that because, um, they're all union employees. When we had it here, uh, we had both union and non-union employees. When we had it here, we had both union and non-union employees, but, but the people that were doing it here pretty much shared the duties, unless somebody was out sick, obviously. So, my concern is that we come up with something equitable, because I don't want somebody grieving this.
Yes.
And I want, obviously, they gotta be compensated, but I was in the Mansfield Post Office the other day, much to my surprise, that post office, if anyone's interested, especially on the weekend, they have set hours every day, Monday to Friday, and Saturdays from nine to eleven, I think it is, and I thought, gee, I gotta remember that, because if anyone needs a passport on a Saturday
We're open on Saturdays, the library
Library.
Oh, the library.
Well, not in the summer.
The nice thing about Fridays, they're open on Fridays, we weren't, we aren't.
Yeah, but they won't be open in the summer, just a thought.
So, I can sit down with the library staff and talk about, now that they would have had about two weeks or a week and a half of like, things going on with it, and figure out how the process is, provide that information to you, you can devise a payment structure based upon that.
Sure, I'd be interested in knowing how many they've done so far, so we can figure out how many they're doing a week, and who's doing them, so that we may decide just to pay whoever's doing them a stipend for each passport that they do, so. But I would like to see what the numbers are compared to
I agree.
The twenty-five dollars per week, so.
It's gotta be fair.
Yep.
Fair for everyone.
So I don't think we need to take, yes?
I was just gonna ask, what is happening to the, you know, Ms. Wilson and Ms. Brady? The town accountant is requesting.
Well, what do we want to do about the fact that she's still taking pictures?
And you had said, do you want to, you, because you were trying to sort of like, compartmentalize the issues, and I, and I get that, but, and you had said, if I recall, that you wanted to at least stop the payment for the current people?
Right.
My only concern, so I, my only concern with that issue is they're still doing something.
Right, so I would say that if you had twenty-five dollars, and it was for the chaos that was the passports, doing the picture, I mean, not to speak for Karen, but it seems like the easiest part of everything, you know? But, if that's what you, if you want to continue it, that's fine, I'm fine with that, we just, I need to let the town accountant know how you're deciding, so she knows what to do for payroll.
Maybe we ought to stop it, we are talking about getting an assistant for Karen, so we'll make it a little easier for her, so maybe we ought to stop stipends now for Karen and Valerie. And then, I assume they're not getting paid at the library yet, even though they're doing it.
Nope, because we're waiting on whatever you just
And once we find out what the figures are gonna be, as to how much we're gonna pay them, it can be retroactive to when they start, okay, so maybe we'll stop the stipends.
I have no problem with that, can I, before I make a motion, or before Selecton Gulart does, is, can I make a, can I ask a question or make a suggestion? It, would it not be possible, because I'm sure it's still a lot of stop and go for them with the pictures, would it not be possible to bring them in parity with the library and have them do the pictures by appointment, or is that not possible?
Uh, what do you, like us, we only say, we say
Like, we say on the website, we can do photos by appointment only, and then you call and you make an appointment, and at least they know when someone's gonna come in, and they can prepare their work around it.
We can do that, I mean, I think that it's a little bit of a disservice for the same kind of idea that Selecton Gulart was, was talking about. I think people like the fact that they can just show up in here, and it's helpful to them. I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, that the photos are not that
The pictures, quite frankly, are a good moneymaker.
Yeah.
And if you're ever at the CBS or AAA, you can just go in there and get a picture taken, you're not gonna get your passport there, but it's a quick way to make money.
You have the picture for the passport.
It's the sort of argument that the building commissioner makes, like that, the people are paying for this, the time it takes for the staff to do that.
Okay.
I mean, I wouldn't recommend, if you're looking at my recommendation, my recommendation is that we stop the passport stipend for the folks at Town Hall. We go to the drawing board and figure out what's going on at the library, and, and come back to you, and that we just keep photos how they're, they've been.
Okay.
That's my recommendation.
Sure, I will, so at this time, I will make a motion, if it's okay, if you're accepting motions, Mr. Chairman, to desist payment of the passport stipend to, do I have to name, I'll name the, to our, the executive assistant, Mrs. Karen Brady, and to the assistant town assessor, Valerie Wilson.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I'll just add, when you're trying to figure out how to pay the people at the library, maybe in that, over, that investigation, that checkup, whatever you're doing, we need, we should consider the people who might be taking pictures here, not, just as a separate thing, that we might want to act on something.
Yep.
Any further discussion?
No, Mrs. Chairman.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? No abstentions? It passes. So we don't need to address the second part of it, you're gonna just check into it.
Right, not tonight.
And they will be, they will be compensated as they have been? The library personnel?
They haven't been compensated with the stipend yet, because we haven't made a decision.
Oh, that's great.
So we're gonna figure it out, and we can pay them retroactive, so that's good.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, see, it's not seven-thirty yet, so we, we have an agenda item for seven-thirty. On the new business, eleven B, Sign Team Butterflies of Hope Car Show Field Use Approval Form, everybody was given a copy of it, has everybody had an opportunity to review it?
Absolutely, yes, when we get to discussion, I would just like to say a very brief remark.
You have any questions, Mrs. Golan?
No, no.
Town Administrator, do you have anything, any concerns about this?
I do not, this is a non, I do not have concerns, this is a nonprofit group who was, did this last year as well. It's for a good cause, and they utilize the space out back, and that's what is before you tonight. And they do so under the rules of the Parks and Rec Commission.
I went last year, this is my brief comment, I went last year, it was a really special event, it was a very fun event, I had a lot of fun, and I really am excited that they are doing it again. They said they would, and I'm happy that they are, and I do plan on attending again, and I would encourage my colleagues to also attend, I don't know if car shows is everybody's thing, it's not, it's not my favorite thing, but I was impressed by the cars. And I saw each and every one of them, and it was just a really special event, and you could tell it was a community, and it's for a good cause as well, it was a community of people that were there in common purpose, so I look forward to going again.
Entertain a motion, then.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to approve excuse me, can I see? To approve, to sign, excuse me, the Team Butterflies of Hope Car Show Field Use Approval Form as prepared this evening.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
It's June the ninth, when is the cow chip this year?
June first and second?
Yep, and third, no?
Oh, May thirty-first.
I think it's May thirty, yeah.
May thirty-first, June one and two, okay.
Are they only doing two days? I thought they did three days.
It's three days, the Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
Friday, afternoon, early one.
Five o'clock, maybe.
And the Bristol Aggie graduation is the Thursday, very full
Yeah, we're gonna be busy.
Um, has the paperwork for that been submitted?
The high, for the graduation?
For the request of the
Um, I believe that Mr. Ryan's has that, I know he's aware of it.
Are they doing it on the field again?
It's gonna be outside, just like last year, weather permitting.
You would need another one of these.
So there's, we're gonna see one of these, okay, that's fine.
Perfect, yeah, that was nice last year.
Ryan's, if you're watching, can you get that to us as soon as possible?
It's not quite seven-thirty yet, so we're gonna go to the next item, reveal one-day entertainment license for Tony Rosario. Is he supposed to be here, or someone's supposed to be here, or are we just supposed to discuss?
Oh, no, I mean, I know about this event, so this is a similar item for him to do the Butterflies of Hope, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Cruise night, it's during the cruise night.
I've just looked at this, this is for him to do a similar event as the cars. What I want to say about this is that at your next meeting, you'll probably have this swapped, because he also needs to do the field use approval form, which I know he's working on, and the Butterflies of Hope group has to do this. So, this is more of the licensing, yeah, because this is what, it's called a public exhibition under chapter one forty, and it requires a one-day entertainment for use. I would request that you waive the fee for the one-day entertainment, because it is a nonprofit.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we approve the entertainment application submitted by Tony Rosario for the dates of June twenty-second, July twenty-seventh, August twenty-fourth, for cruise night, nights.
I will happily second that motion.
Any, any discussion? I just want to make a comment regarding this, this is for the Vietnam vets, and I've been to a few of these in the past, and this is very entertaining, it's a fun time to go, they have a lot of nice old cars, they have some nice music, our generation music.
No, my uncle shows his car there, I went last year, it was fun, yeah.
Good. So any further discussion on this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? No abstentions? The ayes have it.
Da-da, we're, we're kinda close.
I'm not sure we got time to go into the
Yeah, I think we can do the
Is there anybody here for the poll? Okay.
Hi, thank you.
You don't mind if we start it a minute early?
They'll probably be happy. I'm just kidding.
So, we're going to item number seven, the second item on the number seven appointments, had an appointment for seven-thirty. This is a poll hearing, it's for an installation of a new pole on Elm Street by National Grid, I did have an opportunity to go by where it's gonna be located, between pole forty-three and forty-four, I believe, is where that solar farm is gonna be in the back, so do you have anything you would like to tell the board?
I'm wondering, so Excuse me, excuse me, one of the things that somebody stopped me in Hanniford's about was, would they please come up to the podium, we can't hear them.
Oh, because they can't hear.
They can't pick up the voice out there, so if you would just come up, so that this microphone will pick up. This was a request from a resident, so I'm just
Thank you.
It is, it is a problem, I've heard the same thing, and in fact, I talked to the cable person, and they can't hear as well, from the audience.
So could you give a shout-out, please?
My name is Cynthia Robbins, I'm at twenty-seven seventy-one Elm Street, and is, is this just about putting a pole out there? I'm concerned, wondering more so, what's gonna be put in there, and, you know, that's what I'm looking for, information as to what's gonna be up there and across the street from me.
Mr. Chairman, maybe we could have, are you with National Grid?
I am.
Maybe we could have, she might be able to address those concerns. Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, no, no, I, I thought she was from
Yeah, I did too, I'm sorry, I apologize, I thought you were National Grid, I apologize.
I was gonna complain about the bills, but
Can we complain?
You can complain, I'm not sure I can help you, but you can complain.
Sure you can.
Okay, my name is John Doherty, I'm the senior designer and engineer for the town of Dayton, amongst all the towns as well. What we're doing here is, as you know, is they're putting a solar farm out back, okay, in order to feed that solar farm, from what I'm told, they're feeding it underground after three of our poles go in, actually, it would be four of our poles, including the one on the street, okay? The one on the street, we need to have, because the ones that are already there are being used by the existing solar farm, or distribution going through up and down Elm Street, so we need this new pole in order to feed the underground solar farm in the future. What you'll see from Elm Street, you'll see the pole with the push brace on it, and after that, you'll probably see three more poles with overhead conductors, wires, recloses, switches, things like that, and then they go underground from there.
Are the additional poles on the driveway that goes to the solar farm?
Yes, they'll be on the left-hand side if you drive in.
So there's only one on the street?
There's one on the street with a push brace, yes. In fact, if you, if you drove by, there's one there right now with a push brace feeding the existing solar farm, it's gonna look the exact same way.
May I ask you a basic question?
Sure.
What exactly is a push brace? That was one of my questions.
Push brace basically is a pole, you have a pole, it's the one leading up this way, because you can't put a guy wire in the street, or there's no room on the other side of the road, for a stub pole, things like that. Stub pole is, is a pole that holds the guy wire.
All right, thank you. Mr. Chairman, may I ask him another question?
Sure, if I could just make a comment.
Yeah, sure.
So this is for the solar farm, there's two solar farms there now, and they're putting a third one in, it's been approved by the planning board already, that's my understanding.
From what I understand, right now, we feed, we have a pole line that feeds one solar farm, if there's two back there, I'm not aware of it.
I only know of one, a second
They're adjacent
There is another one going back there.
Yeah, there's a third one, but they, they're separate, maybe that's why I'm saying it's two solar farms, it could be considered one solar farm.
Yeah, it could be two solar farms, we feed one, which they could feed another from their equipment that we're not aware of, but that's after the meter, so that's on their end anyhow. But the one we're doing is for the new one, way up in the back.
Way to back, yeah, you had a question?
Yeah, very briefly, the petition for the pole installation was dated February of twenty-nineteen, early February, does it normally take that long for the petition to make it to the board?
Some, for most towns, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it wasn't, it wasn't like a delay on behalf of the town?
No, this is, this is not, this is not unusual, not for Dayton, the city of four, it's all the same.
Okay, thank you, that was my only question.
So my question now, to you ma'am, is where, if you want to come up here also, where is your home in proximity to the pole he's talking about, and what are your concerns?
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out, was
What is the number of your house?
Twenty-seven seventy-one, I have my map that they sent us, I'm right here.
So you're down here.
Right.
Yeah, so you're
So where is the pole going?
Where, more toward the end of the cemetery, of that area.
So on the other side of the street?
On the other side of the street, correct.
Okay.
Where there's already an existing pole with a push brace.
Okay.
It's going right on the same side, right on that driveway.
And then this is where all the
Yeah, they're, they're out back there somewhere.
So they're already in there? They're adding more?
They're adding more.
They are gonna be adding more?
Yeah.
Okay.
They're adding those solar farm to be fed, going to the pole line.
Okay, so, it's not, I mean, it's not gonna change a whole lot from what I'm saying now.
Absolutely not.
Okay.
And that's the third solar farm you'll never see from your property, it's further, it's almost like going, like on a hill.
The poles that are going in are kind of behind a lot of ledge, so if you're driving, if you're driving north on Elm Street, you can see the big rock.
Yeah.
And the poles are pretty much behind that, you might see the pole with a push brace better than that, you probably won't see much.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, I don't have any, Mr. Chairman.
No, Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we approve the request of National Grid to install an additional pole with a push brace
Push brace.
At the solar farm on Elm Street as described in this request.
I'm gonna second that, Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion?
Because the other poles are on private property, we don't have to do anything.
No, we have an easement for them, that's the solar company.
Okay, okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Good night, Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. Pacheco, have a good night, look at his phone going.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? No abstentions? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Excellent, thanks so much.
Have a great night.
And thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming in.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Okay, going back to number eleven, new business, item D, review Dayton Housing Authority agreement for use of space. So we have a copy with the changes, I believe, that Mr. Costa, Attorney Costa has, has made.
Yes.
Has everybody had an opportunity to take a look at it?
I did, Mr. Chairman.
I just have one comment, this was on the agenda for the council on aging, and I don't know if we, did we ever find out if they, no, okay.
Should we delay this?
Yes, please, till next week, if that's okay, I just want to make sure that they signed this.
You gotta keep me in line, Mr. Chairman.
So you don't hit the phone.
So, I'll entertain a motion to continue this until you think we'll have an answer next week?
Yep, because I'm gonna call them tomorrow.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we table action on the housing authority agreement to use space until next week.
Is there a second?
There's a second, please second that, Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? No abstentions? The ayes have it. First reading of the WISP. So, I know in the past, we've had the chairman has read the, the whole thing, I'm gonna shake things up a little bit, I'm gonna read the first page, someone's gonna volunteer for the second page, and someone's gonna volunteer for the third page. If not, I will be assigning people.
All right, I, that helps, that works, I'm okay with that.
You're gonna pick the fourth page.
Pick me for the fourth.
I'll go back to the fourth page. So, this is a, a new policy that we're gonna have, it's called the Written Information Security Plan, WISP, and the background information is, this written information security plan, WISP, describes the town of Dayton's safeguards to protect confidential personal information, per Massachusetts Data Security Regulation two oh one CMR seventeen, is that supposed to be et cetera?
No, it's
Et sequential.
Et, sequential.
Et cetera.
The town of Dayton is required to develop, implement, and maintain a WISP containing administrative, technical, and physical safeguards to protect confidential personal information. Purpose, the purpose of this policy is to create effective administrative, technical, and physical safeguards to protect our employees', residents', and business', non-public personnel identification information. In accordance with Massachusetts general law, the WISP will evaluate our electronic and physical methods of assessing, collecting, storing, using, transmitting, protecting, and disposing of our employees', residents', and business', non-public personal information, thereby ensuring that security and confidentiality. The WISP protects against any anticipated threats or hazards to the, to the security or integrity of our customers and employees', personal identification information, and protects against unauthorized access to or use of residents', business', and employees' personal information that could result in substantial harm or inconvenience to any of those groups. Definitions, personal identifiable information, or personal information for purposes of this plan includes the following categories of information. One, personal information as defined in Massachusetts general law thirty ninety-three H, further defined as two oh one Code of Massachusetts Regulation seventeen, includes any data record, electronic or hard copy, that contains an individual's first name and last copy, that contains an individual's first name and last name, or first initial and last name, in combination with any of the following data elements that relate to the individual. A, social security number. B, driver's license number or government-issued identification card number. C, financial account number or credit or card, debit card number, whether or without any required security code, access code, personal identification number, or password that will permit access to an individual's financial account. I'll ask for a volunteer to read the second page.
I'll read it. Personal information, I was just making sure I was in the right spot. Personal information shall not include information that is lawfully obtained from publicly available information or from federal, state, or local government records lawfully made available to the general public. Two, protected health information defined by the Health Insurance Portability and Accountability Act, HIPAA, as all quote individually identifiable health information end quote held or transmitted by a covered entity or its business associate in any form or media, whether electronic, paper, or oral. Three, individually identifiable health information is information, including demographic data, that relates to a) the individual's past, present, or future physical or mental health condition, b) the provision of health care to the individual, c) the past, present, or future payment for the provision of health care to the individual, and that identifies the individual or for which there is a reasonable basis to believe can be used to identify the individual. Policy, our favorite part. One, the town administrator shall serve as the coordinator of this plan.
He, S slash he, so like she slash he. That's an abbreviation. I can change it if you'd like.
No, no, I was, I'm sorry. I've never seen it before. Nope. She slash he is responsible for assessing the risks associated with unauthorized transfers of PII, personal information, right, and implementing procedures to minimize those risks to the town of Dayton as described herein. Two, the town will provide training to all employees with access to PII. Each department responsible for maintaining PII is instructed to take steps to protect PII from destruction, loss, or damage due to environmental hazards, such as fire and water damage or technical failures. These training efforts should mitigate risk and safeguard PII security. Good job on that one. The town will limit access to PII to only those employees who have a business reason to know or access such information. PII is available only to those employees of the town of Dayton. Will an appropriate business need for such information?
That's a with.
No, it's okay. We're fleshed, this is our first reading here.
I know, that's, I've already found a couple.
It's a long policy, public, but it's needed. Four, employee personnel files shall be maintained in a secured locked location accessible by the town treasurer. Should that say, maybe it doesn't matter, distinction without a difference, maybe the word only? I don't know.
I was thinking that too, but what if the assistant town treasurer has to access it?
Correct. It might be a distinction without a difference. We can hash that out over the next two weeks, next two meetings, excuse me. Five, PII of residents and/or businesses shall be filed in locked cabinets and secured each night. Only authorized employees have keys to such locked cabinets and no alarm codes to designated spaces. Unmonitored storage areas holding paper documents containing PII are kept secure at all times. No paper documents containing PII may be removed from departments without the express authorization of a department manager. Paper documents that contain PII are shredded at the time of disposal or sent to an approved third-party disposal company, dependent upon the procedures for each individual location. Six, access to PII via the town's computer systems and network is limited to those employees who have an authorized business reason to know such information. Each employee is assigned a username and password that they are required to maintain and keep confidential. For more information regarding the terms under which users are authorized to utilize town-owned computers, systems, and networks, please see the computer use policy. I love that. Good work.
Number seven, databases containing PII, including but not limited to PII, and transactional information, are available only to specific town of Dayton employees in appropriate departments and positions, i.e., voting data is available for the town clerk's office, tax payment data is available to the treasurer, collector departments, et cetera. The town of Dayton's networks are secured by firewall. The town of Dayton also employs an outside vendor for network maintenance and viability. By doing so, the town takes appropriate steps consistent with current technological developments to make sure that all PII in electronic form is secure and to safeguard the integrity of records at, at rest and in transit. All machines have virus-scanning software. The network is continually monitored for known vulnerabilities. No employees have access to server and/or firewall passwords. Nine, PII will only be retained for as long as is needed for the town's reasonable business purposes and in accordance with Massachusetts Public Records Law. Ten, in the event of a system failure, the town will take appropriate steps to mitigate risk and ameliorate any attack, intrusion, or other system failure. Any security breaches or other system failures must be reported immediately to the town administrator. The town administrator shall involve the contracted network maintenance vendor to assess the situation and implement courses of action to resolve the issue and prevent further security issues. The vendor in conjunction with the town administrator shall be responsible for documenting responsive actions taken in connection with any incident involving a breach of security and mandatory post-incident review of events and actions taken, if any, to make changes in business practices relating to the protection of PII. Eleven, any service provider for the town of Dayton relating to networks or maintaining records containing PII... Strike two?
Strike, yep.
Will be required to demonstrate safeguards in place to protect the town's PII. Such a service provider will be vetted to ensure that said company is equipped to protect the town's PII. Twelve, once an employee who has access to PII concludes his or employment, either voluntarily or involuntarily, such employee's access to PII shall be terminated. Action in event of security breach. A security breach occurs when there is an unauthorized acquisition or use of personal information of one or more individual...
Huh. I don't know what that's supposed to say. Hold on.
One or more...
Individuals.
Individuals' records? Is it...
Individuals or records. So, like if, if it's a person or if it's a record.
Oh, okay.
So, it's supposed to be both? I'm sorry about that.
I actually understood, but I understand how that could be a little confusing.
Let's see. Acquisition or use of personal information of one or more individuals or record. The following measures will be taken by the town in the event of a security breach, which creates a risk of identity theft to Massachusetts residents. A, the town administrator will notify the Office of Consumer Affairs and Business Regulations, OCABR, and the Attorney General's Office. This notice shall include the nature of the breach, the number of Massachusetts residents affected by the breach, and all steps the town of Dayton has taken to rectify the incident and to prevent any further breaches from occurring. B, the town administrator shall also notify the employees or residents or businesses affected by the breach. That notice shall include information concerning each resident's right to obtain a police report and how to request a security freeze on their customer report. Periodic review. This plan is subject to periodic review and adjustment. Continued administration of the development, implementation, and maintenance of the plan will be the responsibility of the town administrator.
Are there any other questions?
No, I do have one thing that I think needs to be changed, if I may, Mr. Chairman. I think my name is under chairman, but by the time, okay, this goes, I will, I will speak, as I am not now. So, that was the only thing. I think this is a really important policy. It's very comprehensive. There were several times during the reading that I was like, spot on, like spot on, and I just wanted to thank you. There are a couple spelling things, very minor, but I think it's a good policy.
Thank you.
Now, you're getting picky like me.
Right?
No, it's good though, and when we read it...
After three years, so I can go back to that.
When we read it, we understand if it doesn't make sense, like even if there's no error. Like we, that's happened before in some other policies. I love the three readings thing. I'm sure maybe the public is like, why do you do this? I love it. I love it.
Well, this is the first reading. We're going to be reading this at the next two meetings, but we're actually not going to be reading these at the next two meetings. We're going to mention them at the next two meetings. This is public record now, so the public has access to this?
Yes, we upload that, well, once I fix the errors, we upload to, after the first reading, we upload to the website under selectmen, the Board of Selectmen page, there's a link for policies. That's what you want to click on. You can see everything that we've done thus far, plus the date of adoption, or anything that's draft and expected. We put the expected vote of adoption, and that's how long you have to submit comments and commentary. And you can email those right to me if that is helpful, or call in.
So, the next reading will be at our next meeting, which is April 17th, and after that, the final reading, and hopefully the approval will be on May 8th.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Go on to the next item, F, Vacation Carryover Request. We have three requests. Can we take all three at the same time?
Sure.
Has everybody had an opportunity to look at the requests for carrying over vacation time to next fiscal year?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I did.
Any questions?
I didn't have any questions.
I'll entertain a motion, then.
Uh, Mr.?
Yep.
She's doing the same thing. I'm sorry.
No, she's not doing it. She has it right in front of her eyes.
I'm ready to make it, but I didn't know. Go ahead.
No, it's okay.
Should I go ahead?
Yeah, you can go ahead.
Hit him with that now. Mr. Chairman, I move that the following vacation carryover requests be approved. Town Administrator Mrs. Aaronstein carry over two weeks or 80 hours vacation into FY20. To approve Town Accountant Jennifer Louise to carry over two weeks vacation, 80 hours, into FY20. And to allow Administrative Assistant Mrs. Brady to carry over 53 and three-quarter hours of vacation time into FY20.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? No abstentions? It passes?
I just request you all take me with you wherever you're going.
We can stay vacations.
Right, yeah.
Well, we, we don't want them to lose any of their vacation time.
Absolutely.
So, it's very important that they be given that opportunity to carry over to next fiscal year. The next agenda item is something that I asked to be put on the agenda. I'm interested in having the Board of Selectmen be changed to the Select Board. So, we would be select persons. I can be a select man, she can be a select woman, but...
Or select people.
Or select people. But this is a process, and we can't just do it immediately. There's, it has to be voted on by the town, and then it has to be a special elections, by my understanding. Is that correct? So, we want to...
Do you want me to go? So, I'm sorry.
Sure.
So, you have to, this is a two-parter. A town meeting has to approve a warrant article to change this, and then it has to be a ballot question at an election. If you had done, if you'd go forward and do it at the annual town elect, town meeting, it just makes sense that you'd call a special election to finish it up, and then home rule, it's a home rule petition. So, after that, it goes to the state legislature where they would act on our request.
So, there are a few towns that have done this. Plymouth, for example, has, has done this, and then more and more towns every year are doing this. I am concerned about having to call a special...
That's my only concern, Mr. Chairman.
...election. The cost of the talent, that's going to incur.
Could we do it, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind? Would it be possible? I feel like you were alluding to this. If it, if this is approved by a special town meeting, let's say in October, we usually do have one in October, could this be approved on the annual town election ballot?
I think so. I do have to do a little digging about time.
Timing, right.
Timing for that, but we do know, I'm a little hesitant to do this without thinking about ripple effects in the sense of, we know that the school is looking at funding through the MSBA. That also requires a ballot question. So, you'd want to line this up so that you're having, you know, one set of ballot questions. I also have my own questions about whether the treasure collector position should be combined, whether it should be appointed versus elected. That's the same sort of thing. So, my thought process is that we devise some sort of, I don't like the name of this, but like a governance committee or some group of residents that would get together and determine the answers to these questions and, you know, plan when that would be. They would speak at town meeting to advocate for these changes if they so determine that that's how they want the town to be. But I think there's a lot of questions that we could send their way, and they could discuss as a committee beyond just these.
So, what your recommendation is, Madam Town Administrator, to form a committee who will study this in time, so coordinating the timing and possibly in time for a special town meeting?
Right. And we, you know, you, if you create the committee, you could ask them, look, we'd really like you to get this for the special town meeting in October, and they can prioritize. Right.
I'm just trying to think. I had another question.
But I should be clear, I do not believe the school will be asking for their MSBA vote at that town meeting. It's just, so, I'm just saying that as an example of other things happening, that we would want to sync up and align so that we're not having, you know, four special elections based on various needs.
As you're the one, Mr. Chairman, who asked for this to be on, and again, I want the public to know, I, I'm okay with this. I have my own personal views on Massachusetts tradition and the tradition of the Board of Selectmen. I do also understand the history of that, when basically only men were elected to the Board of Selectmen. I believe that we should be inclusive, and we are an inclusive society, and that should reflect minority, female representation, et cetera, et cetera. But I am cognizant of the traditional aspect, but I do balance this with the need to be inclusive. That is very important, especially for myself. What do you think about this, Mr. Chairman? Meaning, the formation of the committee, the waiting until this special town?
Yeah, I'm in favor of the committee, but in this particular discussion regarding Board of Selectmen versus Select Board, I'm also, I'm a big history buff. I like tradition. However, when we formed the Select Board in Dayton, males, white, Protestant, landowners were the only voters at the time. And we've changed since then. 1920, women were, you know, almost 100 years ago, women were allowed to vote. So I think it's time that we change. It's an appropriate name, the Select Board versus the Board of Selectmen. Men. So I'm definitely in favor of this, and I've seen more and more towns adopting this. I'd be interested in-
I'd love to hear our non-male colleagues speak on this, because I feel like-
Thank you.
That's relevant.
Yes.
The most relevant.
Having gone to MMA all these years and gone to so many of their events, and especially having attended the luncheon for elected women, women in elected office, it's probably less than 50/50 that it is still Board of Selectmen. And on the committee I sit on right now, there is somebody there, and she identifies herself as a member of the Board of Selectmen, as do I. They just changed our name tags, and today in front of me, it said Select Board. And I looked at it, and I haven't spoken to Ariella, but I intend to say to her, I belong to a Board of Selectmen. The reason I feel strongly it should remain the Board of Selectmen is because, number one, tradition. And my response when people have said, why are you still calling yourself a Selectman? I said, because first of all, that's how it's designated in the town, and that's what I ran for. And that's what it says on the ballot. But my main reason is, the most important document that covers everybody in this country says that all men are created equal. The day that the definition changes, that men doesn't mean women, then I have a problem. But if that document gets changed to all men and women are created equal, then I don't really have much to say. But traditionally speaking, I'm proud to be called a member of the Board of Selectmen. At town meetings, sometimes people say select, a madam, select woman, or something else. I just think it's, it's a generic term. I don't focus on male and female. I focus on the title. So, no, I wouldn't vote to change it, but if a majority of the people in town think it should be done, then it will be done. If a committee's going to be appointed, and since you mentioned other positions, I'm thinking maybe we should have a town government study commit, governance study committee. Town governance study committee. Because then you could have them look at a, a number of things.
Right, right. And that's, I mean, I have, I worry, you know, about not having a treasure collector if, if, you know, Mrs. Hathaway decides to leave, because I tried to fill a treasure collector in West Bridgewater before I departed, and it was very difficult. And I did not have the constraints of residency. So I have always been a little bit sensitive about that particular interest. But I'd like to see what the people think, instead of just bringing it up to a ballot question and being like, surprise, no, or surprise, yes, at least get some people telling us.
It would be good to get a feedback-
Right.
-ahead of time. In the, in the city of Newton, there's somebody on the committee that I, she's been on there a few years now. They were known as aldermen. And I said, what does an alderman do? Because they didn't, and it was, I think, 11 members, and they're all paid. And Newton has a mayor, obviously. And I said, is that like the city council? They'd know we're aldermen. Well, now, they are counselors. They did away with that particular title, although evidently they're performing the duties of city counselors. But as I say, if the town wants to change it, that's fine. But I hope the committee is appointed, it's looked at, and people out there can express their opinions. And I'm not the only female that has ever served in this position, so I would want to know.
You got the third, I believe, right?
Yeah. And one of them moved away, I believe. But I, I think it would be good to hear how my counterpart, the first female Selectman in town, what her feelings are. And she is chairman of the historic, excuse me, she is the town historian and belongs to the Historic Commission. So I'm just looking tradition at all.
Yeah, no, I'd be interested in that also, but this isn't for past, or necessarily current select people. This is for the future. This is for my granddaughter, who should, if she ever wanted to run for this position in her town, she can run as a select person and not join the Board of Selectmen, so. And when you reference that document, all men are created equal, slavery was allowed at that time, women weren't allowed to vote, so, although I love that document, and that's the reason why we're, we're here today in the United States, it was flawed in the sense that it, most people were not allowed to, to vote, and most people were not equal at that time. So, anyway, I'm in favor of forming this committee.
But it has, it has evolved.
I need, can I ask a point of clarification?
Yes.
So we're talking about a, a committee that's going to make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen, is that correct?
Yes.
So that's common. I know a lot of towns have a general town government study committee. They're not just studying, like, town administrator, or studying this or that. They study everything. They study many different things. Is, if the committee gets formed, does this mean the Board of Selectmen doesn't act tonight? What we would, what we would act on is creating the committee, who would then study this thing, and then make a recommendation back to the Board of Selectmen public. I know it's confusing, but that is common. Is that what the proposal is?
Right, but my, and my, I guess my little two cents in there is to not just specify the Select Board versus Board of-
There are other issues.
No, there'll be a list of things for them to study.
Right, so we could create this list of them to look at, and then just request that they do this first, maybe. But yeah, I have my own questions, and it actually is quite timely, because one of the goals I was thinking about doing for the next year is an organizational chart. We don't have one.
I would like to make one suggestion, if it's okay, Mr. Chairman. If we're going to go that route, and I think that just in general, not just about this conversation about a Select Board, that will be a positive thing for the town to have a committee that does this, okay? My suggestion for the, my colleagues would be, since we might have the, the committee studying, I'm just making this up, something with the schools, something with planning in town, something with the treasure clerk's, clerk's office that you had mentioned, collector, excuse me, then I would suggest if we could have, like, ad hoc members, like, one member of a committee who doesn't get to vote, right? We want people to do this, like residents in town, can come and give their expertise to the residents who will serve and study different aspects of our government. So that would be my one suggestion on that. No voting, just to guide and give expertise.
Okay, I'm not saying government, I'm saying town governance across the world. And the other thing would be, obviously, if we change the designation, then we would also be talking about any position that is currently designated as chairman. That would be a chairperson.
Correct, yeah.
Right.
Ripple effects.
Yeah. All new political signs, everything. Think about it. So, so we want to make a motion that we form this committee?
I will make a motion that we form a town governance study committee to be assigned various titles to be-
Examined?
Um, considered for change, and that a report, that periodic reports be sent to the Board of Selectmen for review. And that this committee be made up of, how many do you want? Five or seven?
So I know, I usually end at five. I'm gonna, I like more for this, because more perspectives.
Ideas, right.
So I was thinking like seven, nine, 11.
I don't even, I gotta be honest, I, I would love that, but I, how many were on the Town Administrator Committee?
All right, I think seven. I think seven would be a fine max.
Yeah.
And that the committee be made of, up of seven individuals. Do we want to say of?
Res, I, I feel strongly they should be residents.
Residents.
For this, they should be, yeah.
With, with the potential of ad hoc members as needed, which they can be brought in for a meeting to discuss.
Just to comment on that particular-
Exactly.
-idea. And I, I think that's wise, like that, the committee should-
I think it's broad enough. It's flexibility.
Should discuss, so for ex, if they were talking about, oh, what are we going to do about the treasure collector? I mean, they really need to sit down with the treasure collector and talk to her about it. And, and what it would mean to be appointed, and what it would mean to join the positions, what do the two positions do?
And the, the townspeople who serve will really get to understand what these positions entail, and what the, what is required by the law-
Right.
-to do these.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Yes, I have a second.
Any further discussion?
I was going to say something. What was it? Oh, so when this committee gets tasked, Mr. Chairman, is it, are, are we going to hand this committee the things that we feel they need to study, or we just need to let them?
I think that that's the way, I think that that's the way.
Yeah, I think we should give them, okay. We're on the same page.
These are the things we want you to look at and discuss.
Okay, and, and I would just add that I would like the Town Administrator to do a basic list, get it to us, to see if we want to add anything to it, and then we'll, we'll actually act on a, if you will, an assignment list.
Sure.
And then we'll ask for volunteers.
I think that, and I think that's the best way to make the committee be productive and, and things like that. So I have no issue with that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, no abstentions? The ayes have it.
Please send in any letters of requests to serve on that. I think they might be under a time crunch, so as soon as possible, if, if we are having any hope to make the October, that's why I say that. If we're having any hope for October.
Yeah, hopefully.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Correspondent?
Excuse me, so we can add this to the posting that we're looking for seven volunteers for a town governance study committee?
Yes.
Make sure we'll send out the email, et cetera. We'll get it on the website, absolutely. Good work, team.
Okay, correspondents, we have another resignation. It was sent to the town clerk. Dear Madam Clerk, I, Timothy Reins, do hereby resign my appointed position for the zoning Board of Appeals effective April 8th, 2019. I would like to thank the Board of Selectmen for the opportunity for serving on the board. My time spent with the board was a great learning experience, and I also enjoyed my time serving with such fine public servants. For those that don't know, he was just recently elected this past Saturday to the Planning Board, so he's decided to resign from the Zoning Board of Appeals. So we have a position available now for at least one member at this point.
Two, right?
We haven't got this, we got both resignations? Yes, we do. We've already received Mr. Adams, right? Yes.
Yes, yes.
I don't think that's still-
Yeah, so we have two vacancies. I understand we're going to be presented with a name next week, I believe, of one person already.
Nice.
Former, former member of the-
We also have that Trails Committee vacancy now, Mr.-
We have a Trails Committee vacancy.
We do have interest in the Trails Committee.
That's good.
So I suspect we will receive a volunteer application.
That's good. Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we accept the resignation of Timothy F. Reins with regret, and thanks for his service to the Town of Dayton as zoning Board of Appeals member.
I will second.
Any further discussion?
Just want to thank him for stepping up, serving on the Planning Board. I, as everyone knows, there was not someone who ran for that vacancy, so we are very grateful. He will be a wealth of knowledge, as he was for the zoning board, and he will apply that now to the Planning Board for five years, hopefully longer, and we look forward to that.
I didn't know we had two people running, and I thanked the other gentleman, too.
I didn't know that either.
I didn't know it until it was over.
And there were more, there was four people, actually got more than five votes. Four different people.
Oh, really?
These were the top two.
There was a race we didn't even know about.
Who knew?
We were in the dark.
The thing, it wasn't the tree one.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Ayes have it. Announce, announcements. Dayton 101 will be held on April 25th at Old Town Hall at 6:30. This will be different boards and committees will be attended to speak to the public and answer any questions that the public may have regarding their boards or committees. The food bank distribution will take place on April 13, 2019. Do we know what time? It's fairly early.
It's 8:30.
And they'll also be at Lincoln Village that day.
I think it's the next half hour, I think it's at 9 o'clock at Lincoln Village. This coming Saturday, April 13th, Alliance Auction, there will be Alliance Auction at the Highway Garage at 2011 County Street, Dayton, Mass. This has always been a very successful auction each year, and I would ask the, the public to participate in this and look at the different items that they have, that they will be auctioning off.
And I might just add, if you have anything that you would like to donate, whether it's furniture or other items that can be auctioned, please get in touch with Tom Ferry. He's president of the Lions Club.
And this stuff can be dropped off at the Highway Department. The Dayton Historical Society, I want to make it clear that I am a member and an officer of the Dayton Historical Society. I am not getting paid for this position. So the Dayton Historical Society is having a psychic fair. You probably knew that already. Saturday-
That's goodbye me, I got that one.
Saturday, April 20, April 27, 2019, at 10, from 10 to 5 p.m. at Old Town Hall, 1111 Somerset Avenue, Dayton, Mass. It's right over here. There'll be a bulky item curbside pickup the week of May 20 through May 24, 2019. Tags are on sale at the Board of Health Office, 1111 Somerset Avenue, Dayton, Mass. For more information, call the Board of Health at 774-872-0943. The next agenda item is Selectmen's Reports, and we have to give our five-year wish list for the next five years.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask you a brief question?
Sure.
I did attend the school committee meeting last night. Before we give our five-year reports, can I give a brief summary, very brief, of the recommendations that Nezdek has made pursuant to the elementary and the middle school?
And following that, I've got today's MMA, but it's short.
I promise you can even time me, two minutes or less. So regarding the elementary school, Nezdek does like a 10% capacity cushion. So this is 10% beyond what they can actually take, so they're very conservative about this. There are two recommendations for the elementary school. So that 10% capacity cushion is going to not be maintained around 2021. So it's coming up, 2020, 2021. Two recommendations. One, reconfigure the small group and/or office spaces at Dayton Elementary, and add, to add one instructional space. Two, and this is really not for discussion, but to relocate two self-contained special education programs to Palma River from Dayton Elementary. I think we know that that's probably not going to be choice number one. For the middle school, the middle school, we have a little more time for the middle school. 10% capacity cushion will not be maintained around 2023, 2024. Four options. One, add five additional instructional spaces to the middle school, so that, I'm thinking is like a modular unit type situation, okay?
Or brick and mortar.
Not idea, or brick and mortar, exactly. Option two, reconfigure school boundaries, I'm sorry, to send some DMS students to Beckwith. Three, move grade eight to Beckwith, another, I'm not sure. And four, move grade eight to the high school. I think we can all think that's probably a little more palatable. So I just wanted to point that out. The Town Administrator did send us the presentation, so we can go through it.
Okay.
Thank you to schools for sending that over.
Absolutely.
May I do this MMA thing, meeting?
You've had this all planned, and, yeah, sure.
We're here, I know, it's pretty, it's pretty tough.
What did I say?
Today was the Mass Municipal Monthly Meeting. We started with a legislative update. MMA has sent a letter to the governor supporting, and the appropriate senator and rep, supporting statewide ban on single-use plastic bags and ask for more time to look at implications that could affect local bylaws already in place. Some communities have already done this, and they don't want the states, if they state those statewide, they don't want to take away from those communities some of the terms that may be in the local bylaws. So it's a, a local control issue. So what they're asking for time. MMA testified on House 751 and State 490, Senate 490. It's an act promoting awareness of sewage pollution in public waters. For example, the estimated cost just to clean the Merrimack River alone is over $1 billion. This is from combined sewer overflow, when we get flooding rains and they just discharge, you know what? The MVP program that we're involved with, that's the Mass Vulnerability Preparedness Program. Katie Theo-Heritis, Heritis, from, the Undersecretary for Climate Change was present, and she said that they will be announcing the FY19 grants shortly, and as soon as they announce those, they will open up the FY20 grants. And there is some nice money available under FY20. Senate 10 resilient mass initiative, this again is also talking about the resilience and, one of the things that the interesting stat was, for every $1 spent on proactive measures for resiliency, the EPA estimates that on the backside of that preparation, it saves $6 if there is a disaster. So that's a pretty good return. The MVP includes bridges, dams, police and fire facilities, acute care hospitals, culverts, dam removal projects. And part of that discussion was, should we, MMA, the, the group, consider as part of the MVP program to ask for a moratorium on just random tree cutting and clear-cutting properties, good, healthy trees that help clean up the environment? So that was, that was pretty much today's information.
Well, thank you for your report, Brett. If I didn't thank you, thank you for your report on the, on the school. So we're going to review the, the wish lists that we all are part of. Mrs. Gulak gave her wish list at the last Selectmen's meeting. I want to give mine. I have two on my wish list. One of them is the new library, and on March 5th, 2019, Town Administrator Mallory Aristine, Selectman Brett Segraffis, Library Director Jocelyn Tavarez, and myself attended the library legislative breakfast on Beacon Hill. We met with Senator Mark Pacico, Mark Pacico's aide, to discuss the town's need for a new library. He indicated that Senator Pacico would be willing to send a letter in support of our needs. We also met with State Representative Patricia Hadad for several hours. She will assist us with our efforts. She feels that the state should increase what they give to towns for libraries. We also met with Andrea Bunker, Library Building Specialist, Board of Library Commissioners, to go over our present plan for the library and possible changes. Town Administrator Mallory Aristine and myself met with the library trustees to discuss plans for a new library on April 3rd. We discussed the possibility of building a new library next to the door to Town Hall versus the current plan to add to the library. As you may know, right now, there's a plan to put an envelope around the old library, Andrew Carnegie Library, and I'm not necessarily in favor of that. Andrew Carnegie Library, and I'm not necessarily in favor of that. So we discussed the possibility of a new library going next door. We're in the process of purchasing the land next door. But I also suggested that possibly, and this is my thoughts, not necessarily anybody else's, that we convert the old Town Hall and add to that, and make that our library, and then add to the building here. Not necessarily in that order, but add to the building here because we're going to need more space if we lose that. And I think it might be a little cheaper for the town if we're adding on to the library over there. We, the library, if it goes over here, or if it goes where the present library is, will have a community room. I think right now, the plan is maybe 55 people to fit in that community room. They don't even have parking over there for that. If we had it over here, we'd have to add that to the library. If we add it to the old Town Hall, we already have that, that spot there for the public, and it fits more than 55 people. It fits at least 100 people or 99 people. So that is my personal belief. So we presented that to them, and they're taking, going to take that into consideration. It is our belief that it would be cheaper to build a new one versus, and that the Massachusetts Public Library Construction Program would probably be more supportive of this. I also suggested, like I said, that we convert the old Town Hall and make that our new library. The trustees were receptive to these ideas and will let us know what they would like us to do. We thank them for the work they have done. There's also a building committee for the library, too, that we maybe, we should also meet, discuss our plans with them. I'm also, my wish list is making the town buildings ADA compliant. Now, this is a five-year wish list on both these items, so they're not going to happen today or tomorrow. On March 6, 2019, Jonathan Gale, ADA Coordinator, Mallory Aristine, Town Administrator, and I met with Jeff Dugan, Assistant Director for Community Services, and Jakira Rogers, Access Specialist from the Office of Disability. We discussed applying for a grant to hire someone to assess our town buildings to make them ADA compliant. Jonathan Gale and I will assist the town administrator in applying for a grant, which I believe is due in August or beginning in August that we need to.
This August, Mr. Chairman?
This August. Jonathan and I also participated, participated in a preliminary assessment of the town building, the Town Hall, and we will work with the town administrator to see if we can begin to address some of the changes that need to be done here. So we're going to start working on some of the minor changes, the handles, the door handles that we presently have on ADA compliance. So we've talked about the purchasing retrofit handles for the doors.
Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
In, so this is fantastic, first of all. In discussions with Mr. Gale and the town administrator, is there, how are, regarding the ADA compliance, how are you working as a team? Is it, we can do these things quickly and short-term? Is that how you're working? And then you have more long-term things as well?
Yes. What we need, we need all the town buildings to be assessed, to see what the needs are. But we think that we can do some things. We had this building assessed, Jonathan and I walked through with the two representatives from the Office of Disabilities, and we went through the different changes that we're going to need to do here. So something that we can do right away, and I think it would help us with a grant, if we're showing that we're making an effort.
Correct.
To make some, some changes. I mean, one of the things we're going to need to do at some point, and I believe Jonathan is working on a grant, is put some kind of an elevator. People shouldn't have to walk out of the building, say they're in a wheelchair to go down to the basement.
I understand.
So, so if we do the new library at the old Town Hall, and we're going to add to the building here, makes it sense that we have an elevator so that people can go between the floors and expand the building here for, for space.
I think at some point, whether we do that or not, whether that's the library or not, that would need to happen at some point in the future anyway. So that might, you should consider that.
Sure. When the person was here, we talked about an elevator. We talked about the elevator going in the back. So actually, the back of the building would actually be the front of the building.
Okay.
So if we have.
Which I think you had mentioned before.
If we have the elevator in the back, we don't have to necessarily do anything with the ramp in the front, because that's a major expense. So if we have the elevator in the back.
We talked about that at a public meeting.
The public way to go in, people have access to the second floor. We don't long have to worry about that being in compliance.
Can I just make a, I just want to be clear. So the grant that we would be applying for in August is a planning grant, and basically that pays for the outside vendor to come in and do all of our buildings. But what we get is a sort of to-do list, and there are going to be some items that we can just take care of in-house and do on our own. And we think that it will give us a leg up in the grant stage if we show we're taking this seriously, we've identified it as an item we want to accomplish, we're doing this already, you know, please look on, look upon us favorably for this grant, and then we can get started with an outside vendor to do all of the buildings.
And we know that the building's not compliant. Doesn't mean when we have this assessment, we're shutting the buildings down.
Right.
We're, we're trying to alleviate, get rid of any barriers for people who have disabilities.
I agree, Mr. Chairman.
The studies has got to include grounds, too, because we know that the bleachers, I'll call them bleachers out back, need to be included for public events.
We were just talking about this earlier today. I agree, selectmen.
So, so for the next, next month, next week's agenda, I assume we're going to hear from Dr. Z.
Well, I'm going to finish my report.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Oh, no, I have an update. I can give a little brief update.
Yeah, sure.
Oh, okay.
So Jonathan and I met with our town administrator on April 4 to discuss the buildings that we need to put the notices up as to how to contact the town's ADA coordinators. We went over all the buildings, and Jonathan and I were starting going around to different buildings and addressing them. In addition, Jonathan provided us with a sample of the application for the assessment grant and a completed assessment report. We will soon be visiting the town buildings to put the notices up. So that's.
That's the ADA notice we approved?
Yes.
Okay. I was actually going to ask.
So I would hope that we keep these reports in a file, so that, we're going to be reviewing these every three months, to update the public as well as each, each of us, as to what we've been doing with our wish list.
Just some direction for the, if Dr. Z gives his now, or if he doesn't, whenever he doesn't. So in three months, will we be giving progress reports on this is what we've done, or we've ranked by priority, what we think we can get done first?
Sure. I mean, whatever.
Whatever we consider progress, I think.
My question is, if there's a warrant article in any of this, let me know, so we can get it.
Yeah, we're going to prioritize.
You know, so we can put it in.
So we would be looking, if, if there's a warrant article, other than like, I've got.
Like, say you're, you're ready to build a fuel depot, which is actually a wish of mine.
We should be ready for the fall town, get it to, so it's on the fall warrant. Okay.
Or, I like it for annual, so I can plan ahead on my recommendations for funding of other items.
For the year.
If that makes sense yet. I, I plan ahead.
Right. And I, and I think if we were now, if we were in the fall, and we're looking towards the annual next year, yeah, I agree. You just mentioned something very important. The fuel depot, just about every department that has vehicles is saying, do it, do it, do it.
Well, I have a great, I have a lot of ideas on the fuel depot. And so I've worked with those two, with them. I would, if, I know that you're super busy with stormwater, so if you'd like me to help in any way, I, you know, I just want you to know that I am here for you to do that. The fuel depot is something I noticed immediately when I first started. It's something I feel very strongly about. It was on my own wish list for you, and I spoke with, it was Cahal O'Brien at the time, but the water, it, putting it at Tremont Street makes it on the way and much easier for the water district. So if we had a partnership with them, we already partner with them for surges, which is where we can get our fuel. We can work with them to maybe finance the whole thing together. So yes, I have a lot of ideas.
So I think the next step for my committee is, we will meet, the three of us will meet again, and, and, and just say, let's pick, what's number one? And I think that's probably going to be it.
And it's something that can.
And that's the one we'll focus on, that we can get information on, because it affects every department that has vehicles. It's just so, so important. And it's a, it's a place, you're going to spend money, but it's a place to get real savings.
Absolutely.
Well, and also for the highway garage, I'm sorry, but for the highway garage.
I'm ready to use the gavel. I'm just letting you know.
We could do a potentially short-term borrowing for a small amount of money. If we did move it to Tremont Street and then sell off the property, you then can take that sale and pay, potentially pay off fuel depot or whatever other needs are, like making this facility in the back of Town Hall ADA compliant, or spending it for other buildings and properties. So we can tie all of these projects in together. They're, it's steep, it's a steep five years, but I think if we work together correctly and play our cards right, we can put a nice little package together.
And use assets to attain assets.
Right.
Right, okay.
It's not a quick, it's a very short timeline, so. But anyway, good work.
So when we came up with the wish list for the next five years, I'd asked that we review these every three months, because I didn't want in five years, if we're all still here, to give an update on what we have or have not done. So I'm glad that we're able to get these reports. Regarding the selling the land, I assume we're talking about sewage first, and then selling the land, the highway, because that, the value would increase, which would increase a lot, which brings us right to Brett's wish list.
Good segue.
That was very well done, yeah.
No, I'll be very brief. The town adminis, this was quite a while back. The town administrator and I met with the sewer commission, and you can correct me, I believe this was February or January, one of, one of the other. And we had a very nice, productive discussion about the need for sewer down 138. And we had discussions about where it should go and things like that. The good news is, what the sewer commission decided on was they would support a feasibility study. We, as a board, have not obviously voted on that. But my understanding in discussions with the town administrator post the discussion with sewer, was that we would shoot for the annual town meeting to have a warrant article that will pay for the study, the feasibility study, how everything is going to work, how much it will cost, the nuts and bolts, the important details that residents would need in order to make an informed decision on if this is a worthy investment. So that was that. Was there anything you wanted to add on that?
I just want to say that I did submit it as part of the warrant. It says Hart Street on this sheet here. What that means is from 138 to Hart Street, that's the scope that we've identified as a priority.
With the sewer, right?
With the sewer. I'm requesting a larger sum, because I asked, when I reached out to the, the group who would do the study, I asked for two sets of alternates, based upon, literally based upon conversations I've had with selectmen, other departments, and kind of rumblings of what other people were talking about. This includes a potential 40B development for elderly housing specifically. So we went through that. And the company that we selected to talk to us about it is very capable and very involved in sewer anyway. So I feel very confident in their abilities to do this. So I have submitted it in town meeting. Hopefully, it stays there. And the finance committee is aware of this. I've already told them that I'm, I'm going to be asking for this. I'd like to give them a heads up.
I'll be there at that meeting. But what I want the public, before I discuss Project Two, which we actually met about today, which is exciting, I just wanted to mention, just even you, when you were speaking of your five-year plan and you were speaking of yours, a lot of these are intertwined. And what that shows me is that's what happens when you plan ahead. You literally put all these pieces together like a puzzle, and that's how the plan works. And so I'm really feeling optimistic about this five-year plan. So I just want to thank everyone. Okay. Very briefly, we met today regarding the Town Hall space issue. I'll call it the space issue, because there's a separate issue that ties in with the ADA compliance and the need for some quote-unquote renovations here at Town Hall. But I wanted to compartmentalize these issues. There is a long-term plan to bring this building into compliance and to hopefully make some upgrades, okay, and related to space. But there's also a short-term issue, which is the lack of space right now. So I wanted to separate those issues. Now, people watching may remember when the building commissioner came and did a brief presentation on a quote-unquote renovation. Mike, and, and understandably so, because it would cost money, there were some reservations. So that's why I wanted to focus us on the short-term plan, which is the space we already have available in this building, right? It doesn't cost any money. Okay, I shouldn't say that. Back up. It is a lot cheaper to move people around along with the things in their office, rather than construct a new part of a building, for example. We had a really, really positive discussion today before this meeting with the building commissioner and the town administrator. And I don't know how, like, detailed you want me to get on this, but it sounds like what we are going to do is make space for the folks in the clerk's office, meaning moving them to a new space, in particular, the town clerk and the assistant town clerk. And again, this is just a plan that we were discussing today. Things may change. That would require some changes to be made downstairs. I'm going to be purposefully vague now. There may be changes that need to be made to the way that the sewer, planning, and then possibly the zoning board from old Town Hall, who may need to come back to Town Hall, that may need to be reconfigured. There is an empty room right now, besides cable being in there, in their little sub-room, where the zoning board used to be, as you know. It's a very big room. So that will be part of that process. It sounds like it can be done, I don't want to say quickly, but a lot quicker than a renovation, and a lot cheaper, as we know. And so I left that meeting feeling very positive, because we really do have some. And I want people at home to know, we do have some space issues on the first floor, especially here. This plan would address those immediate space concerns and do it in a time-conducive manner, and also a financially conservative manner. But I don't know if there's anything you wanted to add, any other details? Because there might be some moving parts. So to reveal everything right now might not make sense, because things are, you know, fluid.
Yes.
We'd like you to stay tuned for next week. We actually requested that the building commissioner come in next week to just present the full plan to all of us, you know, the two of you, and then for you to make a decision. We have some financing ideas about it, and it requires a little bit of quick movement. But I, I have this saying with Jim, like, whenever I talk to Jim, I feel like I have like the worst problem in the world, and he's never going to fix it. But he just finds a way, like the, moving the animal shelter and like, working with DEP in, in a simple way. It was like, awesome, great, thank you. So he, you know, helped us out again today. So Jim, thank you so much. It's worth its weight in gold when, when that happens. It's just so nice. So.
Yes, he's been great.
We'll be back next week, talking a little bit about.
Do we have a lot on the agenda for next week?
We don't have to.
I plan to hear about this. I think, this is something the townspeople will, will really embrace. They've seen what's been done next door, and we had some setbacks because of the weather and the roof and the walls and all that. But now that they've seen what's been done and how well that came out, and now what we're saying is, now that we've moved people out of this building, we've got space. We need to reorganize, reallocate, and we aren't talking a lot of money. We don't need plumbing. We don't need all, all the infrastructure that's here.
The one, the one high cost that will come out is carpet. We have to change some of the, like, while we're doing this, we just have to change some of the carpet. Carpet's subject to prevailing wage, and we don't have anyone on staff that can lay carpet, I guess. So that's, that's a sticky wicket.
Why wouldn't we want to keep the brown shag rug in the sewer?
You don't want the shag rug in the sewer? It's a relic.
It is kind of charming.
That will, that's, I'm just going to lay it out there. That is going to be a high cost.
Is this the original carpet, do you know?
Yes.
Original from?
So for those that like tradition, should we stay with that carpet?
To the best of my knowledge, the, other than the Mary's office that just got new, new blinds, I think the carpeting, the draperies, the shades, the only thing that's been done.
Accessors' blinds are replaced.
I think the only thing that's been done in here that I'm aware of is we had somebody come in from the sheriff's department and paint.
I was painted. Mine was painted right before I, or while I arrived. It's very, very.
The whole over, the, the blinds in your office, I think that's original, too. And, and so.
I guess I just wanted.
We got our money's worth out of it.
I think so.
I just wanted my colleagues to know that we heard the concerns of the board. We understand and sympathize, empathize with the, with the cost factor. And so that's why I think we were happy to pivot towards just, for now, short-term, address the space issue.
Right, right.
And some other, you know, things that need to be improved.
So along that same line, are we working on the furnace? We're working on the new windows, on the degree?
Yep. We have a couple. Yeah, we have a.
We have a little bit of a snag on the windows, so.
We are going to have a meeting with Mr. Pickering regarding some questions he had about the application that we submitted. And that meeting will happen next Wednesday, I think, at 10 a.m.
That's right.
Yep.
But that's all still on the list?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. I think he was confused about a couple things that he feels didn't match the energy reduction plan. I think there was some confusion, because my understanding was that that was creating the energy baseline, not that we were beholden to everything that was in there. So we just need to hash it out, and then we might need to change a couple things in what we submitted, and then just resubmit it.
So do we need to spend this money by July 1st, or do we lose this grant?
Green Communities Grant Funds? No.
No, so, okay, so it's.
That's just like you, it's a one-time thing. You have it, and then it's gone. Whenever it's gone, it's gone. No, this isn't like the animal shelter grant that we got.
I, I just have a budget question. I just thought of, in the budget that we reviewed, there's $200,000 that says sidewalks.
That is not, that's a warrant article proposal.
All right.
That is based upon another grant, Complete Streets, one of the items we got back when we did not get, unfortunately, Complete Streets. And to be fair, to, to all of us down in Dyson, that, that program is incredibly competitive. They funded 11 projects, nine of them partially. So they got a lot more than 11 applications. So we were not funded. They give you feedback, which is of, of course, helpful. And what they wanted to see is town funds put towards and leasing part to the, to the projects.
Okay.
So I threw out 200,000, because Tom Ferry told me that my original cost was too low. So I just stuck 200. What I do, just a little thing for me, I start high, and we start chipping away as more costs come in. But that's in there just as a placeholder, so we can show when we apply again, we're going to ask the town if they'll fund at least one of these projects on our prioritization plan. It's not, one project's not 200,000, but I just threw it in there. We'll see where the finance committee funds it.
That's fine, because we're waiting for that grant money. And that's what's in the box on my desk. What Mr. Ferry and I are hoping to get done is the Miller's Lane Drainage Project. Now, if we get everything done.
We're getting off subject, though. Can we?
No, but this is a budget thing.
No, but this isn't, the progress reports on selectmen's five-year plan.
Okay, but before we adjourn.
We're not adjourned right now.
Before we adjourn, my concern is. Before we adjourn, uh my concern is there's another expense for the work on Miller's Lane. We're hoping to get it done out of this year's budget. If we don't, we need an article for the money. Is what I'm saying. So as long as you're aware of it, yes, yes.
And so these are only what, the warrant closes May first. So these are only what I've received literally today.
So I'm just looking for a placeholder. Yeah, well, I just don't want this to not get through.
Mr. Ferry gave me a placeholder of three different ones.
Oh, okay.
Authorization of what we need to do. So he, and then he said, you didn't write it down. And I said, oh, I have it in here. And then he made me write it down and I wrote it down.
But you didn't write it down.
Right. He goes, you didn't write that down, but it's on my list.
Thank you, Tom.
I just didn't have a number. So these are, these are only the monetary ones so far.
Okay, thank you.
But yes.
Okay, so thank you for your reports. We'll have a a update on July tenth at our July tenth meeting.
Mr. Chairman, did you want me real quick uh to write mine up as you and Selectman Gulak did just for the record?
If you could, I mean, you can just
Yep.
And uh give it to Karen so we have a record of it. I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Acknowledgements, uh we received a uh letter from uh Tom Ferry uh to the Board of Selectmen from Tom Ferry Superintendent of Streets regarding a donation. Please be advised that we have received approximately one hu- one hundred tons of sand-salt mix from G. Lopes Construction. We are thankful for their donation and will apply this for our next winter's adventure. Gratefully submitted, Thomas Ferry. So that's a little bit of sand.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we send a letter of uh thanks to G. Lopes and Company for their donation of a hundred tons of sand and salt mix.
I will happily second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Eyes have it. Minutes, approval of the minutes of regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen on March fourteen, twenty eighteen. I wasn't a select person at that time, so
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen of March fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
For a second. Any discussion? Given none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain, abstain. The eyes have it. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen on February twenty-seventh, twenty nineteen.
Mr. Chairman, uh I motion that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen of February twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
For a second. Uh, have there been any changes to the uh the minutes since we received those, the copy, Karen? Yes.
Yes.
There were changes? So I'm not, I'm not aware of those changes. I'm not prepared to vote on the minutes. I this one here, is this, are there changes in this copy that you gave us here?
No, that's for review.
That's for review.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, for review, for one.
So there's changes on this? Yes, I'm not prepared to uh
Do you wanna call a vote and it does not pass since we already, we have a motion in the second, right?
You wanna with
Why don't we just
We can withdraw it.
Differ it to uh the next week?
Well, have to have, since I've already accepted the motion, would have to have a motion to withdraw.
No, no, no.
I can withdraw, I can withdraw the second.
If you want me to
Even once I've, even once I've, gee, I just felt cushions and I thought it said that once it's made and I acknowledge it, we have to have a motion to withdraw. But I'm okay. You wish to withdraw it?
Well, you gotta withdraw the second.
Uh, I withdraw my, I I make
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I'll withdraw the second. It's getting confusing.
And I withdraw my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, so I'll make a motion that we put the approval of the minutes of February twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen on our next meeting agenda.
I will second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? Abstentions, no abstentions. So we'll get a copy of that before the next meeting. Karen, thank you. Approval of the warrants.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move Karen, are the ones? Okay, all right. I see the order now. Okay. Um, Mr. Chairman, I move that warrant forty A dash nineteen in the amount of ninety-three thousand, four hundred twenty-six dollars, nineteen cents payroll and warrant forty B dash nineteen in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, five hundred seventy-two dollars, twenty-two cents accounts payable dated April third be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions, no abstentions, it passes.
Uh, Mrs. Brady, the list that you gave me here, this is, are these the ones for tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Um, before I make the motion on these, I need to advise the committee uh as required by law that on April the ninth, I signed a war, a scheduled bills payable for two thousand, one hundred forty-five dollars, ninety-nine cents. It was for professional services, supplies and insurance. Another scheduled bills payable for two thousand, four hundred seventy-five dollars, thirty-two cents, and it was for security, uh engineering fees, fuel, oil and professional supplies and services. And a final one on the same date, one thousand, four hundred sixty-four dollars, forty, forty cents for town council services. Those are included in the following. Mr. Chairman, I move that we uh approve warrant forty-one A dash nineteen in the amount of ninety-one thousand, six hundred one dollars, twenty-seven cents payroll. Forty-one B dash nineteen, one hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred nineteen dollars, eighty-three cents. Forty-one C dash nineteen for five thousand dollars, forty-one D dash nineteen for twenty thousand dollars and forty-one E dash nineteen in the amount of a hundred forty-four thousand, eight hundred twelve dollars, sixty-six cents. The last four being accounts payable, all dated April tenth be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions, no abstentions, it passes. Public input. Just wanna have a brief conversation about Earth Day. I guess we haven't scheduled anything in town.
Oh, no. Uh, may I address that? I actually
Can I just
I mean
Finish?
Sure.
So Earth Day is April twentieth. Uh, Vicky Piazza has uh in the past years has done a wonderful job uh scheduling Earth Day and helping out those of us who volunteer to uh pick up the trash along the street. Mrs. Roffus.
I just wanted to say, I think there was some confusion. I think um Ms. Piazza was under the impression that the Board of Selectmen had uh authorized or or asked our town administrator to coordinate event. No municipality in the state coordinates a, it's supposed to come from the community, a cleanup event. Um, we did have a discussion, uh we did clarify with the meeting minutes, and I believe watching the video, um that that vote that occurred that evening was to form a beautification committee who would do cleanups. We did not get any applications for the beautification committee. So this, that wasn't a vote to have town personnel do it. Um, you might have a different understanding, but we did go back. Unfortunately, we didn't get volunteers. So that was, it seems like a miscommunication.
Did we actually form that committee? Did we actually take a vote on the weak table that I thought?
We ended up tabling it, but I do say, because Karen watched it, we, I do request, if anyone's interested in spearheading, like let us, let me know. Um, you know, I support this, this, it's it's not, um I participate this, in this, in Easton with my children. I I bring them and teach them that we don't litter because it kills the planet. And um, I think that the point is that
And you were there last year at, for Earth Day. You were doing it in Easton while we, while that event was coordinated.
Right. And it all takes place on Earth Day collectively. It's it's a national movement. Um, so I support it. I'm sad that we don't have it. I hope this doesn't preclude anybody if you wanna go out and celebrate Earth Day and pick up trash you know, safely, please, but on the side of the road or in a particular area. Um, you know, certainly, please feel free to do so. Um, but we're not gonna be able to put something together in in two weeks' time, nor do I personally feel that we should. It does, it is supposed to come from the community and supposed to give you a little bit of a tie to cleaning up your own area. Um, so I apologize that I wasn't more on top of the beautification committee thing. Um
Well, that wasn't you. The board apparently voted to table. That has nothing. I'm just trying to make the statement that we would never I would, I'll I'll speak for myself. I apologize, Mr. Chairman. I would never ask, she, our town administrator is very busy. We've got five-year plans going. She's doing the short-term stuff, the long-term stuff, the medium-plan stuff. I knew I never voted to ask you to spearhead a cleanup. That is not a town function. Um, Selectman Gulak, do you know of a town that does that, that where the town coordinates it?
No, it's uh, as a matter of fact, last year, as I remember, and it may have happened before, when uh Mrs. uh Ms. Piazza uh ran these, um, the targeted areas were done up around the landfill and Forest Street and that. But there was another group of residents who said, we wanna clean up Pleasant Street, and they arranged with Mr. Ferry to get the bags. And they just went out and did it. So that was, that's the kind of community volunteer event. So if anyone if there are, any of you wanna clean up your neighborhood like was done on Pleasant Street, um if you would just let uh Mrs. Aaronstein know that you have a group of people and um especially if you're gonna be on a very busy road, not a state highway, not one thirty-eight, not forty-four. But like the people on Pleasant Street did, uh, we should know so that we can let the police department know there are gonna be people out working and that um we can let Mr. Ferry know that there are people who will be uh looking to put out trash bags that can be picked up. But it ha- it has been a truly volunteer community, let's clean up our area. Uh, is it April twentieth this year?
Yes.
Which is uh
Saturday.
A Saturday.
Holy Saturday. Okay, all right.
And when I did it last year, I did collect a hundred and thirty-five nips.
Not drinking.
Were they empty?
All empty. I did find some water bottles that were half-empty, but all the nips were all empty. So a hundred and thirty-five.
Draw your own conclusions, public.
Is there anything else to
Uh, just under public input, this is just a quick update. Um, two days ago, Mr. Ferry and I met with Ann Alley from National Grid and reviewed the uh, I'll call them rules, regs, or lack of rules and regs, whatever you wanna we have permission to move ahead with putting the flags on the poles.
Nice.
Uh, Mr. The 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 flags are in. The only thing that Mr. Ferry had a question about, and he was gonna talk to the veterans agents, something about the bottom of the pole and the kind of bracket, but he's gonna take care of all of that. But as soon as that gets worked out, it's a go. We just have to determine when these flags are gonna be put out, if it's gonna be put up and taken down or again. But the project's been approved, the funding was approved. We have now talked to National Grid and um the poles are owned jointly. The rule is if a pole gets snapped, um Verizon must remove it, National Grid must set them. So that's what their arrangement is. So uh, I just want everybody to know, uh, the plan is that for Memorial Day, you will see flags on one thirty-eight um somewhere starting at Center Street and going north to approximately Stone Gate. So it'll go past the Veterans Memorial, so
America.
Will it go on all the poles that have lights? So do they have to have the lights on?
Oh, yeah.
Well, well, the question was, um, what we were looking at, walking out of here at night one time, there are lights that reflect on the poles. They're not, not all of them are direct lighting, but you can actually see the flags because of the illumination. So um, again, that's that's a
That counts.
That's a Mr. Ferry, uh
Don Hershey.
I do the process. Mr. Ferry does the construction part. As as I told you earlier
Process, project.
Yes, exactly. But anyhow, I just wanted everybody to know, it's a go. We get the final approval
Good work on that, you and Mr. Ferry, Mr. Hershey.
So we were very happy.
America.
Anything else?
Speaking of America, I know you wanna get out of here. I'm so sorry.
No, I just
I did
I didn't set my phone for the alarms to go off.
Does anyone miss the alarm? No.
I know. I um, we'll talk about this next week if the agenda allows, but um, a couple meetings ago, Mr. Reins was in here talking about the Medal of Honor and um Mr. Frederick Charles Anderson, a Civil War hero who is buried here in Dayton. That family has selected the town of Dayton to be the recipient of his Medal of Honor. Um, we are very thankful. We are very excited. Uh, we have planned an entire ceremony that does need a little fine-tuning because the family wants to be here. And we said, whatever you would like, you know, of course, we will, we will change it. Um, so we're looking at spring twenty twenty. We'd like it specifically separate from Memorial Day because we look at this as it's a shining star and it needs its own day. Um, but we are, I'm personally just touched and honored and I feel very privileged to be a part of this, that a family would even consider donating such a priceless artifact. Um, I'm I'm beside myself with it. Uh, so thank you very much to that family and um I'll be a little bit more into the details about it next meeting. And thank you to Mr. Hershey. We had the opportunity to work together on this and uh we devised quite the ceremony and it's been very nice. Yeah.
And Mr. Ferry, when I was down in his office when we were waiting to have another meeting, uh went online and we were looking for appropriate signage because like I told you, Mansfield has a sign that says Purple Heart Town and it says Mansfield and and on the sign is the, so he went online and he found a very nice-looking Medal of Honor. So that the que- so what we've, we're also thinking about if it gets approved is where we have uh entering, you know, the Dayton Farming Community signs, somewhere in that immediate area, it will indicate that Dayton is a Medal of Honor town.
I know we may want a separate sign for it, but I know we're supposed to get signs for green communities. Is it not possible to put the, uh that, I don't know how big it is because it may not be possible. The right-to-farm signs are really big. Um, is it not possible to put it on the same pole?
Well, that's what Mr. Ferry was saying, that the the sign would be, it would be the appropriate size. Because we don't want a whole bunch of sticks with signs because people will ignore them.
Or hit them.
But um, but yes, certainly, that was one of the things. But what he found online was very nice, very nice.
Great. And it'll be on public display permanently.
Just one sign?
I think
Oh, no, no, I think
She's talking about the the Medal
Right. The Medal of Honor will be on public display. Um, thank you to the police department. They're giving up some display, but that's our most secure building, obviously. Um, and it, I hope that it incorporates into the curriculum because uh Mr. Anderson was part of the orphan train, um a little known, people don't really talk about it. They don't really remember it. Um, and it's pretty impressive that he was part of the orphan train and, you know, came back to his roots here.
We should definitely give an update on this at the beginning of a meeting because I feel like people won't want
The Medal of Honor?
Yeah.
I'll put it, I'll put it in the
This should be under Town Administrator's
We're letting the uh family decide what date is best for them. So we're not gonna pick a date. There'll be a Civil War reenact is at the cemetery doing firing our muskets and and doing that kinda stuff.
It actually
I plan on
Might sound over the top, but I'm so afraid of it getting lost that I'm requiring that it have a police escort from the um graveside to the, to its placement.
Who will also be an honor guard? And maybe we can have the um, we can have the uh, the group that uh Ken belongs to also be part of, an honor guard.
We actually want Civil War reenactors, not Revolutionary War reenactors. So, but we could, we have the same weapons. So we're gonna use, we have to change our outfits.
Not much happened in that hundred years. Weapon reprise.
Well, Don told me I couldn't do a twenty-one
Not gray, just so
Don said we couldn't do a twenty-one gun salute because they wouldn't load that fast.
You would be there all day. Uh, but this, this also, obviously, we have to coordinate this with the community church and it happens to be their two-hundred-fiftieth anniversary next year, so it's gonna be part of their celebration.
Fantastic.
It's pretty amazing.
Once we know the date, we're gonna let them know.
It's the stars aligning.
And hopefully we'll, at the friendship hall, we can have some kind of a get-together for the family and the townspeople to meet, to meet with them. So I'm looking forward. It's a big, it's a big deal.
About the signs, I think what Mr. Ferry was talking about was to have a sign on each same location as where we have the right-to-farm signs because those are the, those are the key entry points to the town.
I think that that's fantastic. I think that that's fantastic.
And they are very nice. So thank you for that um digression. I appreciate it.
Uh, entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hope not?
Don't you not discuss it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions, no abstentions. The eyes have it. We are adjourned. Thank you, Cable. We're meeting April seventeenth, next meeting.
Next week.
Thank you, Cable. Have a good night.
Good night.